Welcome. Good afternoon. This is the National Capital Planning Commission's November 1st, 2012 meeting. If you would please, all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll note for all present that our meeting today is being live streamed on the NCPC website. And also noting the presence of a quorum, we will proceed, if there's no objection, with the agenda that's been publicly advertised. Agenda item number one is the report of the chairman, and I don't have a report today. And agenda item number two is the report of the executive director, Mr. Costa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief, given the length of today's agenda, but I have two items. First of all, on November 14th, NCPC will host an open house to present the draft policies of the first-ever federal urban design element for the comp plan and our updated preservation element. And this meeting will be held at the District Architecture Center, which is down on Seventh Street at 6:30 PM. So we encourage all of you to attend if you can. You'll also hear a presentation from staff with respect to the urban design element as well as the preservation element. Second, we have some good news. The draft Southwest Eco District Plan won the American Planning Association National Capital Area Chapter Smart Growth Award. We will be presenting the plan and receive the award on November 10th at the annual conference held at Catholic University. I'd like to thank the commission for your support of this initiative and also the staff led by Elizabeth Miller and Diane Sullivan, Bill Dowd, and assisted ably by our Office of Public Engagement for their great work on this plan. So with that, you have a written report in front of you, and with that, I'd like to close my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Costa. Any questions or comments for Mr. Costa on this report? Agenda item number three is legislative update. Ms. Skylar?
I have nothing to report, sir.
Thank you. And agenda item number four is the consent calendar. We have two items on the consent calendar. Item 4A is the electric generating equipment and utility yard improvements at Fort McNair. And item 4B is the Japanese lantern site enhancements in West Potomac Park. Any comments or questions on either of these two consent calendar items? Hearing none, all in favor of passing the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Consent calendar is adopted. Agenda item number 5A is the new draft master plan for the National Institutes of Health at the Bethesda campus. We have Mr. Wile. Welcome.
It is to accommodate a maximum increase of 3,000 employees who would be transferred from other off-campus leased facilities from around the county into more modern research facilities on campus and to adapt and reuse the older laboratory space for future administrative office uses. Staff's primary concern related to the NIH master plan is the adequacy of the current transportation management plan and the applicant's failure to achieve a 1 to 3 parking ratio, something the commission has been requesting since 2005. The primary goals of the NSAB master plan are to rebuild the core of the medical center and to expand the university. While the campus has been expanded to accommodate new activities as a result of the base realignment and closure act of 2005, the master plan does not anticipate any significant future increase in the installation's future population. NSAB does meet the 1 to 3 parking ratio, but staff's concerns regarding the draft master plan include the potential impacts of a proposed underground parking garage on the iconic views associated with the historic building, One Tower, as well as the sufficiency of the draft plan's proposed landscape policies in protecting the installation's forested buffer areas, which separate NSAB's activities from adjacent residential areas. So while it is a coincidence that both of these draft master plans and their TMPs have been submitted for review at the same time, the commission has a very useful opportunity today to provide comments on the future development frameworks for two adjacent federal facilities, which either directly or indirectly impact the local community. So with that, I will begin by reviewing the draft master plan and TMP for the NIH main campus, and Jeff Henkel will follow me with his presentation on the draft NSAB master plan and TMP. So here is NIH's main campus located in Bethesda, Maryland, just inside the Capitol Beltway in southern Montgomery County. Here's a closer-up view, satellite view, of the current 310-acre campus. You will notice it's located in between Rockville Pike and Old Georgetown Road. This shows a little bit of the geographic context for the campus, located just to the west of the NSAB installation campus, and just to the east, the suburban hospital, and directly north, adjacent to the central business district of Bethesda. As we move in a little closer, you can see again Rockville Pike and Old Georgetown Road form the east and west borders of the NIH campus respectively. Rockville Pike, Old Georgetown Road, and Connecticut Avenue are primary arterial north-south roadways that carry a lot of traffic in the area from northern Montgomery County and the Beltway to destinations to the south of the campus, including Bethesda, Friendship Heights, and the district. You will also note that the northern border of the NIH main campus is formed by a smaller residential connector roadway called West Cedar Lane. So here's a graphic that just shows the context of the NIH campus in relation to the rest of the county's development patterns. Again, you can see it's located in the more developed southern part of the county, just on the inside of the Beltway between Bethesda and the district and the Beltway. And you can see there's been a lot of growth in the area over the years. The NIH main campus has expanded from approximately 17,000 employees in 2003 up to its current employee population of 20,000. NSA Bethesda has grown from a population of 8,000 employees to approximately 11,700 in 2012. And although I wasn't able to get a recent employment figure for the Bethesda Central Business District, I was able to find an employment figure of 37,000 approximately 20 years ago, and I suspect the area has grown significantly since then. The graphic before you on the slide shows three future intersection improvement projects, one located on the northwest side of the NIH campus at Old Georgetown and West Cedar Lane, one located on the northeast corner of the campus at Rockville Pike and West Cedar Lane, and one just to the south at Jones Bridge Road and Rockville Pike. And these proposed intersection improvements are being funded through state funds along with Department of Defense funds to help mitigate some of the local area traffic impacts from the BRAC 2005 realignment that increased the population at NSA Bethesda. So NIH currently operates under an existing transportation management plan that is based on a memorandum of understanding that was agreed to by NCPC, NIH, and the Montgomery County Planning Board back in 1992. At that time, the Bethesda campus had employee parking that did exceed the 1 to 2 ratio. However, through this agreement, NIH has really worked hard to meet its 1 to 2 employee ratio goal, which it currently meets today. NIH committed to that goal through the MOU, and the MOU basically strives to meet three different goals through a number of short-term and long-term strategies. The graphic below you, below on the bottom part of the slide, actually shows, it's a graphic from a fairly recent traffic monitoring report done by NIH twice a year, and you can see on the very left-hand side the trip generation for the campus at the time of the '92 MOU and how the campus's traffic generation has significantly increased since that time over the past 20 years. Here's a line graph that shows the fairly heavy traffic volumes in the area. Jones Bridge Road is shown with the green line. Old Georgetown Road is shown with the red line, and Rockville Pike is shown with the blue line. These are average annual daily traffic volumes that really indicate the fairly heavy volumes along three of these key roadways in the area over the last 20 years. So now with that context, I'll get into the review of the draft master plan. So the intent of the master plan is to create a more modern, sustainable campus so that NIH is able to continue its mission into the future. A large part of this is to help reduce its operating costs in the future. Currently, the campus has about 20,000 employees, but there are 10,000 employees that currently utilize off-campus leased space. And as you can see from the table, the cost of renting this leased space is a fairly significant component of NIH's operating costs. So NIH seeks to help reduce this cost by bringing some of the employees back onto So the draft master plan assumes a maximum employee increase of approximately 3,200 people over the next 20 years. And based on the 1992 MOU, which allows the campus to operate at a 1 to 2 employee parking ratio, the draft master plan assumes a maximum increase in parking of 1,500 spaces. Also, the draft master plan assumes that the current TMP exists into the future with its current programs. Here's a summary table showing the existing conditions on campus versus the proposed 20-year draft master plan conditions. NIH will add approximately 1.6 million square feet. The draft master plan reduces the amount of impervious surface on campus by 2% or approximately six acres. The master plan will increase the amount of open space on campus by 3% or approximately nine acres and reduce the amount of area dedicated to surface parking on the campus by approximately 12 acres. Again, maximum employee population increase of about 3,200 people and a parking increase of 1,500 people. And lastly, the current parking ratio that the campus meets today is a 1 to 2.3 ratio, and the draft master plan seeks to maintain that ratio into the future. So the draft master plan is based on six key planning principles. I'll note a few of them here. One is basically to shift the campus development to the east, to its more public side along Rockville Pike and closer to the Medical Center Metro Rail Station to foster walking, bicycling, and transit usage. The draft master plan organizes the future campus development into nine clusters, five of which are dedicated to research. And also, the master plan seeks to really enhance its 250-foot existing campus perimeter buffer and also to foster a network of open spaces on campus. Here you can see an existing building land use map on the left and the proposed future building use from the draft master plan on the right. And I'll go through several of the notable 28 total projects in the draft master plan. So the master plan does include 28 projects, and 26 of them are currently unfunded at this time. Starting in the southern part of the campus, the plan proposes to establish a support cluster with the new grounds and maintenance facility and waste handling facility. The draft master plan proposes three multi-level parking structures on campus, an 800,000-square-foot biomedical laboratory building in the south-central part of campus, a building in addition to the NATURE Building, which is used for biomedical research, educational purposes, and conferences, a new campus police station, a 600,000-square-foot administrative office building located close to the Metro Rail Station, a new childcare center in the northwest part of the campus, and a potential new access road along West Cedar Lane. So the draft master plan specifies that these projects would be implemented in three different phases over the next 20 years. And in particular, here's a concept diagram from the draft plan that, again, illustrates one of its key concepts, and that future development will be more organized into these nine clusters. Five dedicated to research, one cluster located near the Metro Rail Station would be dedicated to administrative office use, two support clusters, and one biomedical research education cluster. Another key concept from the draft master plan is to really enhance the existing 250-foot campus buffer to improve several of the landscapes on the interior of the campus and to really foster a system of campus open space network. This shows one of the key concepts, again, trying to transform the campus into a more transit, bicycling, and walking-oriented campus over what it is today. This diagram shows most of the future development would be located within a 10-minute walking distance of the Medical Center Metro Rail Station. And lastly, the draft plan proposes a series of building elevation envelopes with the highest allowable buildings on the interior campus and along the eastern side of the campus, close to the Metro Rail Station, and then stepping down to approximately 60 feet along the northwest and south sides of campus. And again, this is to respect the adjacent, more residential uses located along these sides of the campus. So regarding staff findings, staff finds that the draft master plan conforms to the 2004 Comprehensive Plan and that it seeks to consolidate parking into structures. It seeks to maintain and conserve trees and other vegetation in the landscape buffer. The master plan calls for the repair and rehabilitation of existing older federally-owned buildings on campus for use as future office administrative space. The draft master plan seeks to encourage ride-sharing, biking, walking, and other non-single-occupant vehicle modes of transportation for federal commuters. And the draft master plan proposes development that meets several federal and DHHS sustainability However, NCPC staff recognizes that the master plan and that it does seek to maintain its 1 to 2 employing parking ratio, that should be revised to meet the current 1 to 3 employee parking ratio standard, which is included in the 2004 Comprehensive Plan today. At the time, as I previously stated, the Bethesda campus, when it established, when it entered into the agreement under the 1992 MOU with Montgomery County and NCPC, the applicable employee ratio at the time was a 1 to 2 ratio, and that was under the 1989 Comprehensive Plan. However, as things have changed, a new version of the Comprehensive Plan is now in force, and that recognizes the fact that development within 2,000 feet of a Metro Rail Station should have a more stringent parking ratio. NSAB does conform to the 1 to 3 employee ratio, and you'll hear more about that in a few minutes. And lastly, the last time the commission acted upon the NIH master plan, which was in 2005, the commission did request revision of the plan's identified employee parking ratio to conform to the 1 to 3 ratio. Staff recognizes that the TMP should be revised so that it includes all of the information that is required under NCPC submission guidelines. NIH should work with Montgomery County, the state of Maryland, NSAB, and the local community to implement several future planned projects in the area. Number one, the underpass high-speed elevator connection under Rockville Pike, which will serve as an important, much-improved pedestrian-bicycle connection between the NSAB and NIH campuses in the future. And also, there are several potential kiss-and-ride, two potential kiss-and-ride facilities located adjacent to the NSAB campus as well, and some other future transit-oriented plans. NIH should coordinate future development with Montgomery County and the local community, for example, the proposed new access point along West Cedar Lane and the 600,000-square-foot office building located near the Metro Rail Station. And NIH should finalize its NEPA and master planning process, and in particular, these bullets speak to the more specific comments recently provided by the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission in its recent October 18th review of the draft master So with that, it is the executive's recommendation to the commission to provide the following comments on the draft 2013 NIH Bethesda Campus Master Plan and draft Transportation Management Plan. To commend NIH for developing a thorough draft 2013 NIH Campus Master Plan that will develop the campus into a more environmentally sustainable place by reducing impervious surface, removing surface parking, increasing open and green space, and requiring future development to meet the Energy Policy Act of 2005, Energy Independence and Security Act of 2007, and the 2011 HHS Sustainable Buildings Plan. But to recommend that NIH should revise the draft TMP to include all of the information that is required by NCPC submission guidelines for master plans as follows, and there are a list of six bullets that contain more specific information that are included in your EDRs. To recommend that NIH should revise the draft TMP to include background information on the NIH commuter survey and a complete set of usable survey results that shows the breakdowns for how each survey question was answered. To recommend that NIH amend the draft 2013 Bethesda Campus Master Plan to adhere to the applicable 2004 campus plan employee parking ratio of 1 to 3, or to successfully demonstrate why the federal campus is unable to attain that ratio goal through a detailed, thorough analysis that includes forecast, cost, and primary travel mode information. To recommend that NIH work with Montgomery County, the state of Maryland, Naval Support Activity Bethesda, and local community to help implement some various planned future transportation projects that will foster transit, walking, and bicycle usage. That the commission should recommend that NIH study the potential traffic impact of any new driveway along West Cedar Lane in greater detail, to design any new driveway to be consistent with the character of the adjacent residential neighborhood, and to work in consultation with the community and the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission during the project's planning and design phases. To recommend that NIH carefully consider and attempt to incorporate all the draft EIS and draft master plan comments into the final 2013 Bethesda Campus Master Plan, and to recommend that the NIH refer a draft final version to the 2013 final plan to Maryland National Capital Planning Commission for review prior to submission to NCPC for final review. To recommend that NIH revise the draft master plan so that it directly reflects several Montgomery County planning initiatives. To recommend that NIH explore the feasibility of complying with Montgomery County's Forest Conservation Plan standards, and if possible, to develop an urban forest conservation plan to reflect the final 2013 campus master plan that meets the county standards. To recommend that NIH should strive to eliminate construction staging and temporary parking within the campus's 250-foot buffer to the maximum extent feasible in the final plan. And finally, to recommend that NIH should strive to minimize the visual impact of the commercial vehicle inspection facility from Rockville Pike to the maximum extent feasible and to reflect that goal in the final draft master plan, and to also coordinate all significant new construction projects with the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission and the local community in addition to the NIH Community Liaison Council Group. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Wile. Very good presentation and a well-done EDR with lots of recommendations. We do have one speaker signed up to speak. Before we go to public comment, are there any kind of immediate clarifying questions to direct to Mr. Wile? Yes, sir.
Are you working to get an updated population as a member of the Bethesda Central Business District?
Yes. Yes. You know what? You wouldn't think it would be difficult, but I searched for a long time and...
I think you would name the call.
Okay. Thank you.
That's a name I didn't even know.
Thank you.
Why don't we, this is a big EDR, why don't we go to public comment, receive public comment, and then we'll return the discussion to the panel. We have with us Dr. Paul Sater representing the Whitley Park Condominium Association. And as Dr. Sater represents a group, he has five minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. In the NIH plan and, because I'm going to talk about the NSA plan also, they have very elaborate figures and trans... But if you, as I do three times a week when I swim at Lower Reap, confront evening rush hour traffic on Street 11, you will find...
Thank you.
...frequently, probably on most days, it is well resolved, even as early as 2:30 in the afternoon during subway stations. One only has to be burnt a few times like this, as my wife did when she went to the hairdresser in Bethesda to stop Bethesda if they have to come back through rush hour traffic. But that is today. If we're talking about 10, 15, 20 years from now, what happens? Bethesda and Wisconsin Avenue South traffic by itself will increase. You can take NIH, Suburban Hospital, and NSA Bethesda, something on Lower Reap, there are an additional some 3,500, that says 4,000, 3,500 parking places. That increase its cars. So it is a problem, you can consider it a problem, it was from NIH for the community, but it is a problem for yours. But it is a problem for your staff and visitors and patients particularly, because they will come late, supplies, transplant organs, speakers, scientists, which NIH has a lot of interchange from biomedical community in the area, will be lessened, or people will come late, staff will come to work, or they'll drive home frustrated and angry from the traffic. So it should be a highest priority for NIH to reduce the traffic impact. So they should make this highest priority, a person called a traffic czar should report directly to the NIH director where some power... directly, directly to the NIH director where some power is at the intersection. They should set specific goals for entry and exits for reducing it. When you set a goal, as one NIH director told me, I was head of planning for all of NIH and the full director, as one NIH director, when he sets a goal that it's frequently exceeded because people can focus on it, so that's set specific goals for entry and exits, strengthen existing programs, which are excellent, but you can almost all are voluntary. Now, think of traffic, it is in fair measure a scheduling problem that people are leaving all at restricted time onto the same road. So how do you address that? You change the schedule if it's a voluntary change. Then people may, because they like long hours, make four, six. If it's a voluntary work week, and say you can work four days a week, people voluntarily not having the Friday, so that doesn't help traffic on Monday through Thursday, and your contractor, you know, you used to leave four days, it's building or something. Those probably at across the street, the medical, the medical center and suburban hospital, which will be busier now with people on Reed, if, if the contractors leave at the same time, they're not doing anything, they're helping by four days a week, that's a problem. So you should expand working hours from 7:00 to 7:00, Saturdays 8:00 to 3:00. If you have, if this is such a high priority and a big problem 10 more years from now, you have to take measures like this. Now, when you do that, that affects the parking ratio, which let's start with a one to three ratio. If you have somebody working a four-day week on Friday and Saturday, that space is available. If it is a clinical center, nurse, nurse working three 12-plus-hour shifts, her or his parking place is available four days a week. So to assign, to say this is a staff parking place is based purely on a, on a nine-to-five day working, but these other steps to lengthen the hours and days, extend that so you don't have a five-day, hopefully, you can mediate a neural, and then that makes it inapplicable to have ratios based on five days, because as I say, not having a five days in order to...
Dr. Sater, could you wrap up your, your comments?
Okay. Now, so applied in this, this, and this is absent from Walter Reed, from NSA's plan and your plan, there is hardly any mention, there's virtually no mention of coordinating such things of these, I would say, at times for contractors and systems with the neighboring institutions, so that you could end up having a solution for NIH that with the identical solution for the other two institutions doesn't solve the problem. This needs to be developed in a comprehensive way, welcome to the law, that NSA is going to talk, and none of us think that's new comments.
Thank you very much. We'll return the discussion now to the commission. Questions or comments about the EDR? It's, Mr. May?
So I'm glad that Dr. Sater brought up the issue of when people are parking, because that was one of the questions I had. I mean, do we actually have a sense of how, you know, what percentage of the, of the employee population is actually there at, at a peak time? Because if it, I mean, it, it could be, could be that there's really a, effectively, you know, a one-to-one parking ratio.
Yeah, we do. As I said, NIH has a, has a biannual traffic and parking monitoring report. The latest maximum occupancy rate is 98%. However, that was at, you know, the, that was the peak hour, one to two. If you look at, you know, kind of the core hours between 10:00 AM and, and 3:00 or 4:00 PM, it's about 82% utilization rate.
So it really is a fairly ordinary nine-to-five kind of office facility?
Correct.
It's not, there are not a lot of 24-hour, weekend operations?
I believe that's right. Yeah, I mean, there, there are different types of employees. There are fellows who, you know, have to come in in, in the middle of the night and, and on the weekends, and there are, there are probably five or six different types of employees, but based on what I've seen, it, it is a typical nine-to-five. We also have Ricardo Herring here from NIH as well, who, who may be able to answer your questions.
No, I mean, you, you gave me the numbers. So is that, I mean, that's not something that we ever take into consideration, the actual peak occupancy is not something that we take into consideration when considering approving a master plan and parking ratios, right? We just do it based on a gross number of employees?
That's right.
Okay. The, can you tell me the, I know there's a difference, we have different standards for suburban locations versus urban locations? So what's the, what would, if this were in an urban location, what would the parking ratio be?
Well, for downtown Washington, we have a maximum ratio of, of a one to five.
Right.
And as we move, I, I believe, outside of the, the historic core, but within the district limits, we have a one-to-four ratio. And then outside of, of the district, within 2,000 feet of a metro rail station, it's a one-to-three. And then outside of that, it's a one-to-one and a half, one-to-1.5 to two range.
I mean, it, it's pretty striking when you look at the diagram, and you saw that almost the entire extent of buildings are within a 10-minute walk of the metro. Is there any information on where people are commuting from? Because that's as much of an issue for folks as well.
There is, there is a thematic map in the draft plan. I mean, basically, they're coming from, from all over the place. I mean, they're, my impression is that the employees commute, there are more employees that commute from the west and the north of, of the campus compared to the south and the east, kind of on the other side of the city and the other side of the metro.
Which is where the subway line comes from, south and east, right?
Right. But, but you do have, my understanding from talking with NIH is, I mean, they have employees that, that are coming from Frederick and southern Pennsylvania and West Virginia, pretty, pretty far out.
Okay. I mean, it really is pretty striking, the idea that, that there would be such good proximity to metro, and the parking ratio is only 1.2. I mean, that's just shocking, especially given some of the other complicated commuting patterns that occur with other federal facilities in the district. I mean, you know, think about what's happening at St. Elizabeth's, and they're sticking with a one, one-to-four ratio, and they don't have that same close proximity. Thanks.
Mr. Ventsch, does you have? Mr. Ventsch, then, then Ms. Gony.
I have a couple of different questions. So a lot of this is really focused on parking, but I missed the part that tells me what the mode split is to walk, bike, and transit.
You know, I didn't get what I thought were reliable statistics. I did get, I was able to get a number of transit, of federal subsidy users, which was 55, 5,500 employees out of a potential employee population of, I believe, 16,300. So that would give you a utilization rate of the subsidy program of, of about 34%. But unfortunately, NIH was not able to tell me which of those users used more than one service. So mark to, to metro rail, to bike, versus, you know, which are only using one service rather than, than chain services. So I did get a, a mode split of 34% for that, that subsidy.
Is it a subsidy? So, so this was another question I had. So this campus provides free parking to its employees, is that correct?
They do.
And they provide free transit to its employees, to their employees?
They, they do provide the, the $120 maximum, up to that amount, the, the maximum federal subsidy share. They also do provide a, a benefit of $20 a month if you're a bicyclist, but you are ineligible to use the $130 maximum metro check fare if you do accept that $20 a month bicycle subsidy.
So can you rec, can you receive any metro subsidy if you get the bike subsidy?
My understanding is no. It's, it's either or.
But you also can't park and get the metro subsidy.
Right, right. That's right.
It seems like a cash out might be a better option for people, so that they could travel as weather allows, different sorts of ways. That's how a lot of other places do it, and very few private employers, I mean, I mean, many, I mean, GSA has a policy now that, that, that doesn't allow the federal government to pay employees for parking. People park at the market rate. So that, that seems like one very simple thing to be doing to, to address this issue, because I find this remarkably unambitious as a, as a TMP, that, that in 20 years, it proposes to do absolutely no better than, than today, even though nationally and globally rates of car use are dropping, and, you know, use of other alternatives are increasing. So I'm a little bit distressed by that, especially given the incredible proximity that this site has to metro. I did see in your report some remarkable statistics about a huge reduction in the peak hour of, 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 of traffic congestion, but I think Dr. Sater would explain that by saying that they'd simply spread the peak over many more hours. Do you have an explanation for that remarkable drop in the peak hour congestion?
I don't, other than to say that before 1992, I don't think NIH was, was really committed to a transportation management program. I don't, I don't know if they had a TMP before 92, but when they really focused on it, they pledged that they would, at, from that point on, no matter how much development on the Bethesda campus there, there was, they would never exceed those baseline trip generation rates for outbound and inbound vehicles. And so they got really serious about their TMP, and they instituted a very robust TMP, and, and those trip rates really went down. And they've, they've been able to keep them in that, you know, 30 to 40% reduction range now for the past 15 years or so.
But for the peak hour?
The, the peak hour, I, I can't say for sure.
Okay. I mean, Dr. Sater, I think, was suggesting that it's not necessarily a benefit to the community to have three hours of crushing traffic congestion relative, rather than one hour of, of, of traffic to, to avoid. So I, I'd like a little bit more information about that. But the master plan has all of these principles, development clusters, internal access, development and proximity to metro, but the result of which would be absolutely no improvement in, in the, the, the change in mode. It would seem like you're planning to fail if, if you want to do these things that would increase the proximity to the metro and increase the collaboration and the circulation, and yet not see any result in terms of the, the, the actual, how people choose to travel.
Mr. Gony might, I'm sorry, I was going to say, it might be prudent for the, some of these relevant questions to have a response.
Do you have an answer about the peak?
Yeah.
About the peak, what you were talking about, some of the...
Please identify yourself.
I'm Joe Cox. I'm with the Division of Amenities and Transportation Services at NIH, and oversee the transhare program, the shuttle services and other amenities at NIH. And you were talking about the $20 for a cyclist, and they can't get a transit fund. That's all mandated by the Internal Revenue Code, and we, I would love to be able to mix-use those as incentives, but unfortunately, we can't. I know there's legislation in place in Congress right now where they're trying to enhance that, trying to increase the subsidy and also give a mixed use between, if I want to cycle 70 days, I could get $100 and get the rest in a transit subsidy if it should rain, or something like that. But unfortunately, we're not allowed to do it, our hands are tied by the Internal Revenue Code.
I mean, other businesses have handled it, that you can do a, an employer benefit, or you can do a pre-tax benefit?
The pre-tax benefit is, is regulated by the IRC code also, and they can't, if they do it, it's really income, it's not a pre-tax benefit if they exceed the 125 and the $20 benefit.
I'm just saying that rather than you saying what the mode will be, you can have pre-tax cash that can be used for travel. And if everybody got the same, let's say, $120 benefit, they could decide whether they used it to pay for parking, used it to pay for transit, or used it...
Can't use it for parking. The IRC code is pretty specific, that, you know, the executive order that federal employees can't use the benefit for parking, because we want them to get out of driving vehicles.
How are you, how, how are you incentivizing your employees to get out of driving vehicles?
Well, we have between, you know, 5,500, 6,000 people in our transit subsidy program. Our bicycle subsidy program is at $20, we have about 100 people in it that actually gave up parking and a transit benefit to use their bike to commute. And, you know, we're, work within the IRC code what they can use that $20 for. It's either to buy a bicycle or do bicycle repairs. The 125 maximum that we can give for is a transit subsidy is pretty well under the constraints of the Internal Revenue Code, that you can't mix-use the bicycle subsidy with any other form of transit. You can't give them parking, and you can't give them a transit subsidy if they're on a bike subsidy. And that's all spelled out in 132F.
In two, in 1996, the IRS changed the tax code to allow employers to cash out their employees, so that you didn't have to provide one benefit or the other. So...
It's still within the guidelines of how they can use that benefit, even if they would cash out. Instead of us cashing out, we actually give them the benefit.
Right.
We don't do it through a pre-tax nature.
If you cash them out, then they could make their own choice, including paying for parking, right? So right now, people have to travel every day the same mode, in, in terms of the type of benefit that you give them. They can't mix modes, which is what everybody in Washington tends to do these days. They take a different mode depending on what their day is like, and what they're doing in the evening, and what childcare responsibilities they have, but you're locking them in to one mode of travel. So I guess, I guess one of the things that seems kind of antique to me about this plan is that it, it does kind of force people to pick a mode and then live with it, and that it, it, it doesn't seem to really do anything to incentivize people not to drive, since the parking is free.
But we still have close to 6,000 people in the transit program, and they have to give up the parking benefits that can't drive, they have to use the transit system.
Right. Those crazy folks who want to take transit or do something else, maybe it's more convenient for them and cheaper, because they, than they, maybe they can do with one less car in their family, which saves them about $10,000 a year. But my, my question is, what are you doing to get people not to drive?
I'm not sure I've followed you. We're giving it, we're providing transit subsidies.
You're not charging people for parking, for example? You're not sending a price signal that it might be better not to drive?
Negative incentive, yeah. I understand.
So none of that?
I'm sure that's up for discussion, but, you know, currently, we don't, we don't practice.
Is it free for you?
It's free parking, yes.
No, no, I mean, is it free for NIH? Like, there's no cost to the land? You don't have to pay anybody to maintain the garage?
Cost associated with the parking space.
There is a cost.
Correct.
Well, one thing to think about is to maybe try to, you know, reflect that cost in terms of what the employees have to, have to pay, you know, to, to do, to be there by car.
And I think that they tried that through GSA last summer, and for some reason, it got shot down. They were looking at federal-wide to do something of that nature, so...
Fortunately, we have someone from GSA here who could speak to it, maybe.
I, I don't know anything about this site. All I know is that a year ago, we started, their, the policy did become that, that all federal employees pay for their parking in, at GSA buildings. I know I pay for mine, because I don't live near the metro.
I mean, that's...
And it hurts, and it's a, it's, it's a very good point. I mean, with their, at least just in the, in the, in GSA buildings, or the actual, our headquarters in ROB, the numbers of spaces, in fact, that are empty now are noticeable. It works. I don't know if there's some policy that NIH has that precludes it, but I don't, I do not believe it would be a GSA-derived reason.
I would just also think, I mean, it's not your thing specifically necessarily, but as the premier health... but as the premier health organization in the country, that there are well-known and documented benefits to health in terms of...
The cycling program, we have probably as many as 600 cyclists, you know, especially when the weather's nice and counts. And every year for the last seven years, we won the bike, the employee with the most cyclists on Bike to Work Day. We win that, you know, hands down every, you know, every year. So we have a serious cycling program. Dr. Collins participates in cycling to work. If you go to our website, at our NIH Bike Club, you'll see that he talks and promotes the aspects of cycling.
I'm just saying, you have an enormously large population there, most of whom drive, and that, and that there are health benefits associated with working physical activity into your daily life, even if it's just walking from your house to the metro station and then walking the 10 minutes to the most distant building onto campus. And that's a great thing to be promoting. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hart?
In the, in the report, there was some background information. One of the things that was pointed out was in 2005, when the plan came before the commission, there's some things requested, including a submittal to the commission of a forest conservation plan. Was that done?
I did, I did not find any submission, any follow-up submission in our records.
With this master plan, is there a forest conservation plan?
In the Montgomery, this is a Montgomery County...
You identify yourself, please.
Hello, myself. My name is Ricardo Herring. I'm the Director of Facilities Planning at the National Institutes of Health. The forest conservation plan, we do have a forest conservation plan for NIH, but it is not up-to-date with the current master plan. So we have to revise the forest conservation plan. But that is really for Montgomery County primarily. They're the ones that require...
It's a state requirement.
It is a state requirement, which we have done.
But it's not applicable to this master plan?
No, it's not. We do it as a separate document.
Yeah, I think it needs to be part of the master plan. Second thing is, I didn't see anything in the report that addressed stormwater management.
Again, that's another document that's being, it's called the NIH Institutional Stormwater Management Plan. That is, we already have one of those, but that too needs to be updated. And that is being updated as we currently speak.
I think, again, that that needs to go hand-in-hand with a comprehensive plan update so that all the different elements of the plan are addressed at one time. And then the third thing is that in compliance with energy conservation and, you know, achievement goals, I see a lot of language saying that there's going to be action to do it, but I don't see any of the actions spelled out because this master plan goes beyond the horizon for which the federal government wants to see, you know, 100 percent net zero energy use. And other than saying, "We're going to do that on a building-by-building basis," we are looking at a campus here, and it would be nice to see how the campus is going to approach these goals and try to meet them simultaneously with all the new improvements as well as, you know, rehabilitation and things like that. So I found that, at least in the report that we were given, that it looked like that particular element was lacking.
Are you suggesting an amendment on the conservation plan and the stormwater management plan, that the EDR be amended to make those recommendations?
I would like to see them addressed, yes.
Mr. Brantia, do you have a comment on the current item before us, the potential amendment?
Not on the amendment, sir.
Hold off just a second.
Handle that issue.
Can staff perhaps draft a proposed few words? I'm assuming you're moving that?
I still move.
Is there a second that the EDR be amended to suggest that the recommendations, that there be a conservation plan update as well as stormwater management update that corresponds to the draft master plan?
Second?
That's been seconded as well. So before we vote, I think there's still more discussion. Perhaps staff can wordsmith that a little bit in the appropriate place, and we'll come back to it.
Does that, does that need to be expanded to include the environmental impact statement? I thought I saw some narrative that that would follow in a separate presentation with EIS.
Well, it looks like there's at least three, three missing documents.
Yeah.
Forest conservation, stormwater, low-impact development, and...
Correct. And NIH is currently still working on their draft EIS, and I assume those things, stormwater management and the forests and the energy will be included in the draft EIS, although I have not seen that yet.
And fourth element, historic buildings. Aren't some of the buildings at NIH historic?
I didn't hear your question.
Historic register?
Yes, we have, we have currently, currently two historic districts, and we are adding a third based on this master plan.
So maybe it needs to be broadened.
So we pretty much have a very robust historic preservation program.
Okay, I think staff is wordsmithing that, so we'll continue the discussion while you're working on that. Mr. Miller?
Yeah, I just wanted to associate myself with the remarks of my fellow commissioners and sister commissioners. On the parking, I'm struck by the Fandere 2005 action on the, on the master plan update, which Mr. Hart just referenced, that required them, required NIH to change their, change their parking ratio to 1 to 3. Never, that never was done, and it's not being done in what's before us today. It's just another acknowledgement of our previous actions being ignored. Why wouldn't we, in this, in our comments on the parking, why wouldn't we take a more aggressive action and say, "We would disapprove if the 1,500 net new spaces, while we support the replacement of surface parking with structure so that the whole pervious surface issue is addressed." But why wouldn't we just disapprove the addition of any of those net new spaces since I think they probably all would have to be eliminated to try to get, I mean, they shouldn't be added in order to try to get to have some reasonable prospect that they'll be able to meet the 1 to 3 required parking ratio. It's been required for almost eight years now. Is there a reason why we can't be that specific in our EDR, our comments on the, on the master plan, just to simply disapprove any net increase in parking on the campus?
If you wanted to draft that as an amendment to the EDR, I'd...
Yes.
You'll note in the next presentation with the Bethesda Naval Center that there's a statement that says does not support. This is still at preliminary. You'll be seeing a final master plan where you're going to take an action in a couple of months when they resubmit. So at that point, that's where you would actually, you know, if you found something to be not satisfactory, you would make a disapproval there. So you could use that, or you could probably suggest maybe it does not support the...
Right, that's what I actually had written, written down, looking, using that as the basis, does not support the increase of 1,500 net new spaces and, and request reduction of any increase until they achieve the 1 to 3, the required 1 to 3 ratio. So, yeah, I would, I guess it'd be right after the bullet, the paragraph on the, or in addition to, or right after the paragraph that does address parking, the next-to-last paragraph on page three, which EDR references the parking. So I would add, does not support adding 1,500 net new parking spaces and requests, requires, urges, whatever the appropriate word is, reduction of any increase in, in spaces until the required 1 to 3 parking, NCPC's 1 to 3 required parking ratio is achieved.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, it's a, it's a motion, but I mean, we have, are we, it looks like staff is drafting another, you know, language. It may be that somebody can move the EDR with the two, with the two paragraphs. So moved.
Second.
So the, so did you move the amendment or the EDR?
Both.
I would move the, I would move the EDR with both Mr. Hart's amendment and this parking ratio amendment.
Okay, the EDR has been moved and seconded to be amended, to be amended with language, conceptual language for the conservation plan, the stormwater plan, and the parking ratio, but not approving the 1,500 additional net new spaces. We've got that conceptually. Okay. Is there further discussion on this EDR? Hearing none. All in favor of the EDR as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you.
One comment.
Mr. Hart?
This is to NIH and their team of consultants putting this together. We do appreciate the chance to see the draft before it becomes a final document because it's in this exchange, I think, that we can see some opportunity to improve it. So we don't want to hammer you to death. There's a lot of good things in here. We're looking at, trying to focus on opportunities to better the whole thing.
One of the things I wanted to point out, that we did not use a consultant for this contract. We used our staff, and I like, for my staff, you know, my understanding, we recognize for their work.
Thank you very much for your, your hard work. This is, and for your cooperation with Mr. Wile and other members of the staff. This is a lot of work. It's a comprehensive EDR, and we appreciate your work very much.
Thank you very much.
We look forward to continuing working with you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a few additional comments, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Brantia?
Let me start with thanking Dr. Sater for his testimony. Appreciate that. If you would, sir, would you share with us the timeframe that you were in your position as the Director of Planning? I'm just trying to assess the currency of your observations.
It was in the 90s.
90s, okay.
But it was under four different NIH directors. But I have kept up with NIH since then.
Okay, I appreciate that. We were supportive of many of the comments that you had, in particular regarding traffic management. I think some of the recommendations about developing telemedicine and disease prevention are perhaps outside the scope of this, of this group. The comments that we have, I think, are similar to some of the, what the other commissioners have mentioned. The plan talks about sustainable buildings, the HHS Sustainable Building Plan, HHS Strategic Sustainability Performance Plan, EPACT 05, Executive Orders 13423, 2007, EISA, and 13514. But again, there's not, there's little to no narrative about which specific sustainability targets NIH attempts to achieve, and, and nothing about the baseline of where NIH currently is. Let me frame my remarks by saying I have nothing but love, respect, admiration for NIH, having served there from December 2000 until October 2003. At that time, in the Division of Engineering Services, now ORFDO, Office of Research, Facilities Directorate. And it's good to see Mr. Herring again outside of Building 33, the engineering building. On the, on the comments about parking ratios, also concerned about that. I don't know if I would go so far as to describe them as remarkably unambitious, but I perhaps would describe them as planning to meet low or modest expectations regarding parking, particularly since the 1992 MOU talked about meeting that ratio.
Tomato, tomato.
I think there's a differentiation. 24/7, we talked about how we calculate parking. I think NIH is a good example where peak parking is probably the more accurate calculation considering it's a 24/7 operation with lots of engineering staff there 24/7, nursing staff, and hundreds and hundreds of providers taking care of various sick patients. On page 10, it talks in the proposal about NIH's excessive existing parking capacity and planned additional parking capacity and ratios. And it says that the 1992 MOU was done to improve the availability. We did a little research. In 1993, in October, Eleanor Horns Norton sponsored some legislation which became HR 3318, and in December of '03, Public Law Federal Employees Clean Air Initiatives Act. And what it does was it, by directly improving traffic congestion, it also improved air quality. So it looks like, again, dating that in the 1993 timeframe, I don't think much has improved along that particular quarter. I think also the Montgomery County Executive recently was in the news about his concerns about congestion. It looks like at this time, both of the main accesses to NIH and to Bethesda is off of the main north-south Rockville Pike and Georgetown as opposed to the east-west Cedar Lane and Jones Bridge Road. Appreciate the comments about the number of folks in the mass transit benefit program. Well, 34 percent, I think, was the calculation. I think that's remarkable, but clearly lots of, lots of room for improvement. Having worked on that campus and having people who have surveyed the campus, it appears to be a vehicular-friendly campus. While it does have a twin-loop system to keep folks on the campus and not onto the main thoroughfares, it's not quite as vehicle, or, excuse me, not quite as bicycle or pedestrian-friendly. The comment that you can get anyplace on campus within 10 minutes, 2,000 feet is a bit of a misnomer because you can't go through buildings. Many of those buildings you have to go around, and it's much, much farther than 10, a 10-minute walk. Page 26 talks about open space and landscape to encourage interaction between staff and visitors. Again, because it's a vehicle-intensive area, that interaction probably is not achieved. Talked about...
We've already voted on. Do you have much more?
Just a couple of things.
Okay.
There's some figures in there about shuttle bus, having a robust shuttle bus system. If you break down that 18,000 or folks, 10,000 folks a month, it's only 400 or 500 a day, which seems odd with a population of almost 18,000. We continue to promote, it looks like NIH, well, the ERSS stated goals, continues to promote single occupancy vehicle by doing things like removing surface parking, but putting parking structures immediately adjacent to and connected to the building where the people would be working, as well as trying to improve turning lanes to make it easier for single occupancy vehicles. So there's lots of things that are concerned that, a little bit of a mixed message. Lastly, bike stations. It talked about a bike-share station near the metro. Because of the way the bike-share program is set up, I'm not sure it's conducive to somebody riding a bike or using a bike-share and then parking it and then going to work and then paying $20, $30 a day for that bike-share. Might be useful going back and forth between the two campuses or between NIH and Bethesda to the business district, but it wouldn't be optimally served. So our basic comments are, again, about what appears to be promotion of single occupancy vehicles and achievement of not very aggressive or ambitious goals. Thank you.
Thank you. If you have something quickly, Paul.
Yeah, just quickly, I'm Jonathan Kass. I'm here as the second alternate to the D.C. Council Chair. Just a quick comment about transportation that, but not, not necessarily affecting transportation on the campus. It's a large facility and thankfully centered on Metro, but when you have situations like this, it often has some impacts for the surrounding community. And if it hasn't already been explored in situations like this, it's, it's good to explore any opportunities for, in this case, I think, the community to the West, whether there's any possibility of those folks crossing the campus to access Metro because it would make a huge difference for Metro accessibility for the residences to the West if there were, in certain cases, options for that.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Kass, very much. Thank you, Mr. Wile, very much.
Thank you.
Big job. The, we'll move on to item 5B, and this is the draft master plan for the Naval Support Activity Bethesda. We have Mr. Hinkle. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. We're essentially walking across the street. As Mr. Wile noted, we're fortunate to be able to study both of these plans at the same time and provide comments. As he provide a pretty robust description about the surrounding community, I'm going to skip that. But I just, just want to know that, as Mr. Wile noted, NSAB is directly across the street from Rockville Pike. The campus is focused on to Rockville Pike, but the southern border is, is... The campus is focused onto Rockville Pike, but the southern border is, is based on Jones Bridge Road. On the north side, you have a private school and, and some residential, single-family homes immediately adjacent to the perimeter. And then on the east side, the site's bordered by I-495 as well as a community park. The site, of course, is formerly the National Naval Medical Center, and it became NSA Bethesda in 2010, following implementation of BRAC. But it has been operating as a 24-hour federal medical and research facility since 1942. There's multiple tenants on the site. The, the most well-known, of course, is the Walter Reed National Military Medical Center. But there's also the Uniformed Services University, which is a major tenant as well. There's multiple, multiple services on the site. A number of inpatient services, a number of outpatient clinical services. There's a lot of residential functions, as well as retail functions on the site as well. This is a visual that was contained in the master plan, and it essentially shows the condition of the installation as it is today, representing post-BRAC construction. What I'll do is just quickly walk through this visual and highlight some of the, the major structures. Of course, Walter Reed and, and the medical center is fronting onto Rockville Pike, which is on the western side of the facility. The university is, is towards the back, if you will, or the east side of the university, I mean, the east side of the installation. As I mentioned, there's a number of residential facilities. There's the Warrior Transition Lodge and barracks, which are on the north side of the installation. There's also Naval Lodge and Fisher Houses, which are more towards the southern border of the installation. And there is a Child Development Center in that area as well. There's some laboratory and research facilities that are situated in between the medical center and the university and, and central to the campus, as well as central to the campus, some administrative and service functions. And as I mentioned, there are some retail functions on, on the site. There's a naval exchange, and a new naval exchange is, is currently under construction, and that I think is going to be complete this month. But there's some other retail as well. There's a gas station, a bowling alley, and some other retail amenities. And then finally, there are some, some standalone parking garages on the site. Most of these are centered within the installation. There's a central utility core, which is also in the center of the installation. And then throughout the installation, there's a number of recreational amenities, but towards the back or the eastern side of the installation, we do have some recreational fields and some significant trails through some wooded areas. So the draft master plan, it's to provide an installation-wide framework for physical development. It covers all the requirements from the installation tenants. It has a goal of improving the installation facilities and standards, as well as the quality of life for people on site. And it brings the existing master plan, which was done in 2008, up to date, and uses kind of a post-BRAC condition as its starting point. And I think, as mentioned, there is a draft transportation management program that was submitted by the, the Navy for review by staff, as well as a draft environmental impact The master plan is essentially an enhancement of the installation's existing missions. There's no introduction of new missions. Looking at the existing, as well as the proposed land use maps, there's, they're relatively the same. And the master plan actually provides a, a number of short-term planned projects, and these are projects that are anticipated to be funded and built over the next five years, essentially with a end date of 2018. And then it, it identifies a number of long-term opportunity areas, which are projects that potentially could be built through the life of the, the master plan, which is up to 2022. This illustration is of the future development plan, and what I'll do is walk through some of the, the major short-term projects that are identified in this illustration. So first up, one of the main proposals with the master plan is, is to do some additional development within the medical center. What this consists of is the demolition of a number of buildings that are behind Building One, which is that, that iconic main structure facing Rockville Pike, and then a, a construction of a new medical facility to replace those. Part of the issue is they're, they're older in age, but they also don't meet the new mission of the hospital. So they're looking at, at demolition of these structures and, and constructing a new facility there. To accommodate that, they'll have to provide some temporary medical facilities, and, and those are proposed to be in the existing parking lot, which is in the northwest corner of the installation, as noted on the map. And then as part of that effort as well, they're looking at providing additional 500 parking spaces, primarily for patients and visitors to the medical center, as well as for VIPs that will also be, that also use the medical center facilities. The next major construction being proposed within the master plan is an expansion of the university. This includes a 340,000-square-foot structure, as well as additional parking of 400 spaces, which I believe is used for both the university as well as other activities on the base. There's two options to site this. Option one are, is on the south side of the university campus. The university campus itself is this cluster in gray. And then option two is immediately to the west of the, the university, existing university campus. Option one essentially is, is a standalone university structure, as well as a standalone parking garage. Option two would include parking underneath the university structure. In addition to those, those two major developments, there's some other smaller short-term projects that are proposed within the master plan. These include an expansion of the existing Child Development Center. This would be expanded into an existing parking lot. And an expansion of the existing Navy Lodge, and, and that again is an expansion into an existing parking lot. And then some additional projects to discuss, a second wounded warrior transition lodge, as well as a USO facility for, for the warriors and their families that are recuperating at the facility. Both of these have been reviewed by the commission this year and, and approved. In order to meet some of the, the enhanced utility requirements, along with just replacing some, some aging structures, there's some utility improvements being proposed in the master plan, as well as a renovation of the existing helipad, which is primarily used for VIPs at this point. But, but this project is to bring it up to current standards. Within the master plan, there's also some projects related to the recreation and open space aspects of the installation. I won't necessarily walk through these with you, but they include some, some enhancements to some of the entry areas, especially to the university, as well as the Building One structure or the main hospital structure out front. It also includes some enhancements to some of the, the recreational fields that are on the eastern side of the campus, as well as some, some improvements to some of the courtyards and, and spaces between some of the, the buildings. And just note, the master plan does account for and recognize some projects that will be built by others, not necessarily the Department of Defense on the site. These include, as, as Mr. Wile noted, pedestrian tunnel and, and elevators to the metro platform, and also the potential kiss-and-ride lot. And there's actually two optional locations for that, and further study needs to go into that. But one would be on Rockville Pike, and the other option is on Jones Bridge Road. Within the master plan, there is a projected increase of 925 employees. Right now, following the, basically the, the completion of the BRAC requirements, the medical, medical mission is, is expected to level off, so there's no, there's minimal additional staff related to that that's being proposed in the master plan. And just a note, the installation has accepted approximately a million patients and visitors in the past year, and there's no additional growth anticipated for, for those patients and visitors. So, so within the master plan, most of the growth in terms of, of employees is, really involves the, the evolving research and, and teaching-driven mission of the university. And a number of, of these employees actually work in facilities that are in leased space throughout Bethesda and Montgomery County. And just a note, a lot of these actually, my understanding is, they, they do come to the installation often on a daily basis, so it's not necessarily like, all of a sudden they're, they're a bunch of new employees. They actually do go back and forth between the existing leased spaces and, and the university In terms of parking, there is an, an increase in parking spaces that's being proposed. The draft environmental impact statement actually analyzes a range of parking arrangements. This is based on various alternatives for the construction projects that I just highlighted. The range is, is represented by a high and low estimate of provided employee parking. If you look at the existing right now, there's, there's approximately 3,500 spaces that are assigned to employees with the existing employee population of 11,686. So that gives us a parking ratio of one space to 3.32 employees, and that's well within NCPC's recommended one space per three-employee ratio. And in fact, it's a significant improvement from the previous master plan, the beginning of the previous master plan in 2008 or 2007, when the parking ratio was closer to one to two. In looking at the, the high estimate for parking and the low estimate for parking, what this represents is an additional 187 spaces to 359 spaces for employees. If you look at the expected growth in employment, which is, which would result in, in 12,611 employees at the site, you get a parking ratio of between 1 to 3.25 and 1 to 3.40. So both the high estimate and low estimate in terms of, of provision of new parking for employees will actually result in, in meeting, in the installation meeting, NCPC's recommended parking ratio. In addition to these parking spaces, there's, there's another 886 parking spaces that are proposed within the master plan, and these are for patients and visitors and barracks and lodging. And these numbers are based on, on the Department of Defense's Unified Facilities Criteria. What I would like to note now, and I guess is significant, is, is there has been some success at this installation in terms of transportation management. The 2008 TMP, from the 2008 period of the TMP up to, up until today, there's been a reduction in single occupancy vehicles at the site from 72% to, to about 40%. There's been an increase in registered car pools from approximately 100 to approximately 450. There's been an increase in mass transit use from 11% to 44%, and an increase in walking, biking, and drop-off from 2% to 5%. Of course, this represents employees and not necessarily those visitors and, and patients that are attending the installation. Building on this, the, the draft transportation management program for, for this update to the master plan includes some additional measures. And that is adding some smart parking technology to our parking facilities, working with tenants to determine opportunities for additional tailworking, monitoring shuttle service to determine potential improvements, further promoting bicycling and, and improving bicycle facilities. And actually, what occurred is, is there has been a redevelopment of all five gates at the installation, and those include parking lanes, but they're not necessarily connected. So the, the installation is looking at how to make some additional connections with those bike lanes and enhance the existing bicycle facilities on site. The master plan does include some framework plans that address building and siding and, and how they relate to things such as the, the security standoff distances, as well as building heights. There's a framework for pedestrian amenities, a framework for roadway amenities, another framework for signage, as well as lighting on the installation, but I'm not going to dwell on those. But I do want to note that the master plan also has guidelines for, for installation landscaping and recreational amenities. And, and also notes that the installation appearance plan, which is a separate document, contains a design guideline to maintain a landscape buffer at the southern, eastern, and northern perimeters in consideration of the neighbors. However, there is no landscape framework plan, like those other framework plans I just showed you, that address and mitigate the effects of the proposed projects on the existing landscape. So here, here you have the existing landscape, as well as the proposed projects, and there's, there's no framework to kind of mitigate any potential issues that those proposed projects would have on, on the existing landscape. So in particular, you know, it doesn't address how the proposed projects, such as the Navy Lodge expansion, the possible garage and the expansion of the Child Development Center may impact the existing landscaping buffer on the south side of the installation, or how the long-term opportunity to redevelop the warehouse site, which I, I haven't discussed, but that's the purple side on the northeast corner, labeled number 11. How redevelopment of the site may impact the buffer on the north side of the installation, as well as the views onto the installation from the neighboring single-family homes. Or most importantly, how the number of proposed projects on the west side of the installation, so along Rockville Pike, including the underground garage, the temporary medical facilities, the metro enhancement, the helipad renovation, as well as the, as well as the proposed kiss-and-ride lot, may impact the, the existing historic landscape and yard in front of Building One. So to look at this historic landscape along Rockville Pike a little further, the proposed underground parking facility, which you see outlined in purple in this map, does have the potential to impact the view from Rockville Pike towards Building One. And this is a view that's been obscured with construction for the past four years, as seen in this photograph, which was grabbed from Google. But I do want to note that the construction facilities are now removed, and the view has been restored this summer. This is a, a view that the master plan actually recognizes as a, as a quote, pleasing view from off-base, which is in addition to the yard being a contributing factor to the installation's historic district. So as such, staff suggests that the Navy further consider the alternate garage locations that were evaluated in the draft EIS, and, and this map is pulled from that and shows what those alternative locations are, to accommodate this proposed increase in parking. And these alternative locations will reduce the potential negative impacts on the historic yard, and may also better distribute external traffic, reducing impacts to traffic flows along Rockville Pike due to the potential increased use of gates one and two to access a proposed underground parking. Just quickly to discuss the university expansion project, staff has concerns that the alternative one site may have significant potential negative environmental and visual impacts. This area is currently a mature forest, as seen in the existing landscape plan down below, and provides a heavy buffer between the installation and the single-family neighborhood across Jones Bridge Road, as you could see in the photograph. So staff suggests that the Navy only consider alternative Site Two for the university expansion project, as this area is, is currently mostly developed with a parking lot.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hinkle.
Yes.
Preferring option two to option one, under their existing plans for option one, the 570,000-square-foot building, can they get that on, I guess it's a function of design, but can they get that in alternative two?
My understanding is they, they have done studies, and, and they can do that.
Okay.
There's some elevation changes that allow them to, to actually build the structure underneath and, and still have, you know, the, the relative height they need for the remaining structure.
Thank you.
Same question about Alternative One. It appears just visually that that site is even bigger, that a buffer of trees could remain and still accommodate that large building?
I believe so. What they're looking at, and I'm not sure what's illustrated on this site, but I think what's illustrated is larger than the footprint that they need. But what they would be looking at is approximately 4.2 acres to construct both a building as well as a parking garage on Alternative One. Just to wrap up here, this is almost my last slide. The master plan does, I guess, let me catch it. There are some limitations to develop on the site, in particular, the center of the installation. Essentially, it's mostly built out. It does contain sensitive environmental areas. In particular, there's Stony Creek, which runs basically through the center of the installation. And it does have valuable recreational space. So really, what the master plan shows is a number of new projects that are being proposed towards the installation's perimeters on really all four sides. So because of that, staff feels that really these individual projects should be informally reviewed by the Montgomery County Planning Department, really to assess these impacts to the adjacent residential neighborhoods. And this is actually a recommendation from the commission in 2009, when they approved the installation master plan, and it also comports with some of the comprehensive plan policies that we have today. And just to continue on the coordination discussion and related to what Mr. Wild noted, staff also feels and recognizes that the Navy has done a tremendous job in the last number of years working with the local transportation departments. But we hope that they continue that collaboration with both the local planning and regulatory agencies to develop and implement traffic and transportation improvements related to the implementation of the master plan, as it relates to the pedestrian tunnel and metro connection and the Kiss and Ride Lot, as well as some intersection improvements in the bike-share facility and so forth. So with that, it's the executive director's recommendation that the commission provide the following comments. First is to support the goals and objectives of the draft master plan. However, not to support and urge reconsideration of the potential construction of an underground parking garage in front of Building One due to significant potential negative impacts to the historic views of Building One and its associated landscape from Rockville Pike and to traffic flows along Rockville Pike due to increased use of gates one and two to access a facility. Also, not to support and urge reconsideration of Option One as a potential location for the expansion of the Uniformed Services University due to significant potential negative environmental and visual impacts resulting from construction on a steeply-sloped site, which is also covered by mature forest. The executive director also recommends that the commission provide the following comments, recommends that the completion of the master plan document, that with the completion of the master plan document, the Navy continue collaboration with local planning and regulatory agencies to develop and implement county, state, and federally funded traffic and transportation improvements, and to incorporate a landscape framework plan that includes strategies to preserve and enhance the landscape buffer at the southern, eastern, and northern perimeters in accordance with planning objectives within the master plan, increase the tree canopy to the extent possible to minimize and mitigate tree loss, including but not limited to negative impacts to historic views from Rockville Pike resulting from the construction of a new pedestrian tunnel and metro entrance, the expansion of the helipad, the underground parking garage in front of Building One, and a Kiss and Ride facility, and to minimize and mitigate potential negative impacts to the view from Rockville Pike due to the placement of temporary structures in the northwest parking area during the construction of a new medical facility. The executive director also recommends that the commission provide the following comments: to commend the Department of Navy for meeting the one-to-three parking ratio, and then to recommend that in the implementation of the master plan, the development of the Department of the Navy coordinate individual project reviews with the Montgomery County Planning Department for comments at the same time that they consult with the Maryland Historic Trust for determination of effect on historic properties, and to require that future submissions include documentation demonstrating that they have done so prior to submitting to NCPC for review. And that the commission further notes that a significant number of construction workers may be on the installation on any given day to complete various components of the proposed actions within the master plan, and encourages the use of alternative modes of transportation and staggered work hours for construction personnel to mitigate impacts on traffic in the surrounding community. And I didn't really talk about this before, but the TMP does address transportation management in terms of employees, but with the number of construction projects that are being proposed over the next five years, we felt it was important that the Navy recognize that these could be considered employees as well and should consider their effects on the transportation network as well. And I do understand that they do do that, but I thought, but staff felt it was an important statement to make. And then finally, to note that staff will provide additional comments on the draft installation master plan, the draft transportation management plan, and draft environmental impact statement to supplement these recommendations. In terms of the draft installation master plan, these would just be more technical comments. And that concludes my presentation. Mr. Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Hinkle, very much. Very good. Another comprehensive EDR and a major project. Questions or comments from the commission? Mr. Hart?
I'd say the same thing that I said about the master plan for NIH, in that I'm not seeing stormwater management addressed, forest conservation, or energy, and I'd like to see those included in the draft. And personally, as an architect and planner, I'd like to understand why we're recommending that the parking, the underground parking garage be eliminated if it is indeed underground, and then why we would not entertain the option, the site Alternative One for the university if it's well-screened.
In terms of the underground parking, the conversations with the Navy is that staff does not yet understand what the potential impacts to that view and that historic yard would be. So at this point, we can't necessarily support the idea of the underground garage. There are some alternatives that have been evaluated. We encourage the Navy to look at those alternatives a little bit further, simply because we don't know what the impacts would be for that underground garage.
I think it would be fair to ask more questions, but I would hesitate to, out of hand, to say that, you know, putting an underground parking garage is not acceptable. In my mind, if the underground parking garage maintains the landscape pretty much the way it is, it puts that parking out of the center of the campus, close to two gate accesses, and eliminates a lot of traffic that would be otherwise going through the campus. But I'm not comfortable saying that I'm against it. I would like to see more development of the concept in order to better understand what the Navy wants to do and how they want to do it, because there's 8,000 ways of doing things. And I'm sure with enough creativity, we could find something acceptable.
Here, here. Move to second. Great. When do I get to? We'll get to you in just a moment.
I have a question. Do you have a slide that shows, I'm having a hard time figuring this out, that there are demolition for buildings two, four, six, seven, and eight? Do you have a slide that shows, that highlights the buildings that are scheduled for demolition? I mean, I'm drawing it, but I'm...
Sure.
Eight over, what's building eight?
There's a...
Over by the metro?
No. What you have is the Building One, which is the iconic tower.
Right.
Behind that is a series of structures.
Okay.
They're all connected, but they are numbered separately as different buildings. And they've been built at different times.
Page 24.
So they're all represented by kind of this large square that's behind Building One.
Do you, what page is it on? On our thing?
It's on page 24.
24, okay.
Had a similar confusion. Building eight on 24 is a building to be demolished. Structure number eight on page 12 is the crosswalk, the pedestrian crossway.
Are there more kind of clarifying questions right now before we go to public comment? Ms. Tricone?
Question, you mentioned a number of helpful framework plans that were part of their submission. I didn't see a bike framework plan. Was that included and just not mentioned? There was a pedestrian framework plan, there was an open space framework.
The, I might ask a representative to come up. I know the master plan deals with bicycle issues, and I just don't off the top of my head recall if the roadway framework dealt with.
Okay, we can handle it in comments if people don't know offhand, so just wondered if it was there.
For a moment?
For the moment.
Let's pause and go to public comment, then we can return the discussion. We have Dr. Paul Sater with us to provide comments on this project and representing Whitley Park. And as such, you have five minutes, and there will be a little clock on the wall with a beep.
I hope Deborah Young passed my revised comments. I brought 25 copies, but it was originally on the 23rd. I, in addition to attending over, well over a year, the BRAC meetings, which the county and the community representatives were at, I was a member of the group that developed the Walter Reed Strategic Medical Plan, and many of these topics were discussed. There are studies that show that people that live near highways die more. When you have near-capacity highway on 355, you have cars not at highway speeds, but you have them at 5, 0, 5, 10 miles an hour with only 10 feet separating. There are more cars, cars generate more pollution when they're not operating at efficient road speeds. So, and the Walter Reed Hospital is right near there. When you have a road that is very close to capacity and you're building for 2018 and you're getting more traffic from NIH and from Bethesda and below, it will be even closer to capacity. Each increment which you add, and if, when you're very close to capacity, has a much bigger effect than if you were way down, if you had an empty road. So these are very critical kinds of things and will generate more pollution. When you look at pollution studies, they're talking about the average individual, but Walter Reed has many people that are much more at risk than the average individual. I had a friend that died of pulmonary disease who was served as an outpatient at Walter Reed, who was for weeks in the critical care unit right close to Rockville Pike, who had heart problems. There are some staff that have, that are more at risk, so just taking an average isn't sufficient. These are in Walter Reed's interest for the similar point that I made with NIH, but there are some developments and opportunities for a medical facility. We've mentioned in connection with NIH to stagger appointments, contractors. The last construction they did, and I'm not blaming them because they were focused on trying to merge, which was a difficult task, these two hospitals, and they did an excellent job on that. They, you know, several years ago, had contractors leave, I think it was roughly at 3:30 or 4:00, and it may, it produced instant gridlock because they were all coming at the same time. Imagine if NIH contractors were released at the same time. But the Walter Reed NSA contractors should be staggered, their employees should be staggered, their clinics should close at different times. They should be open from 7:00 in the morning, which some clinics are, to 7:00 in the evening and Saturday mornings. There are some facilities that are open 7:00 in the mornings. What Walter Reed has done is they ask employees with surveys, and I don't know how good the surveys were, "When would you like to come?" They ask staff, "When would you like to come?" When they are locating MRI facilities, and they have six MRIs, but they have three basic ones that have to be open 24/7, if I call them and they have no trouble getting staff at 3:00 in the morning, when I call them and say, "I need an MRI this week," they say, "The only way you can get an MRI this week, if I call it on a Monday, is if you come at 3:00 in the morning." I'm happy to come at 3:00 in the morning if given that choice. They're saying, "We can take care of you either the next week or the week after during business hours." If they chose to have more MRIs, that would take a good part of the building because they're very big machines and take a lot of surrounding space. So if there is an institutional need for Saturday hours, for longer working hours, it isn't just what you ask employees, what they prefer. But patients, if you're a single mother, you may be working or not working, and you have two kids. Let's say one kid is not sick, but the other is. You have to bring both kids, leave a job or leave your home, bring both kids to the hospital, get seen. Probably one of those directions is during a rush hour, peak traffic hour. And for many, it would be better, and it needs to be publicized, if they came on a Saturday morning, if Saturday hours were available, or if it was later in the evening. It's to the advantage of those patients. The parking places for patients get utilized, I hardly ever use for the first time of the day, a space. I use something that a patient has vacated. And patients use two, three, sometimes even four times a given space, so they're adding more to traffic. But there are developments and opportunities that can reduce the number, that will reduce the number of patients. Staggered hours for clinics, I mentioned, and expanded hours, develop, this was brought up in the strategic plan at length, we had somebody from Kaiser that experienced with the satellite facility, is to develop satellite facilities, like in Germantown and in Laurel, not Largo, because they already have a satellite for all of the military in Virginia, but we don't have in Maryland. And I have a patient friend who comes in from Pennsylvania. Why should he have to brave traffic when he could stop earlier to see a primary care doctor who could exist in Germantown or wherever? And that would, instead of building in an already congested area. Telemedicine, even if Walter Reed had no definite plans to expand telemedicine, the field is growing so vastly and getting so much cheaper that by 2008 and beyond, they will be using more and more. They in fact are using some with automated appointment reminders, phone contact with physicians, and email contact, so I don't have to go in and ask my doctor a question. I can email through Relay Health. They have an extensive disease prevention program. If they enhance that further, they will prevent some physician visits and hospitalizations. Telemedicine, incidentally, has been shown by... Telemedicine, incidentally, has been shown by research studies to reduce visits to the hospital, to reduce emergency room visits, to reduce hospitalizations. There are, so there are reasons, and I spelled them out in the report I handed in on twenty-third and the one more complete edited one that I handed in today, of, of why the actual use may go down. Already because of the horrendous traffic problems, and the strategic plan, it was said, so this is third party, that, that many of their secondary care, like pulmonary, had much lower admission rates, in part, they thought, because of the traffic problems. So they have a, a very difficult situation. They are doing a fair amount, but a lot of it is, is voluntary, and for the same reasons I talked about with NIH, that can result in, in not efficiently spaced out use. They need to exercise some authority, and the military has, is particularly able to do that as a, as an organization, and since much of their staff is either military who can be deployed at different times-
Give a wrap-up, please.
Or are contract, and contracts can be changed, that they are much easier to change their schedules than, than most other institutions. And I have yet to see any of these guys coordinate with the other two actors, NIH and Suburban Hospital, and that's paramount so that they don't overlap what they're doing, and that's, that's a prime thing.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Additional comments, Mr. Avincia?
Comment similar in the, in vein to the VEIN, in vein, as opposed to NVAI. There was a comment on the NIH plan that was not reminiscent of the Strategic Sustainability Performance Plan. Same comment for Bethesda, we don't see language that directly supports the DOD Strategic Sustainability Performance Plan. On page three and forty-two of the comprehensive report provided by the staff, there's a recommendation to commend. Bethesda for achieving the parking ratio, I think we saw numbers saying that it's creeping up to three point four, so we're rapidly about to, to exceed the standard. Same comment about twenty-four, seven operations, about high, high traffic after hours and on weekends. We talked about the report. There's some language on page sixteen about structured parking in order to preserve and increase open space. That might be the case if surface parking, equivalent surface parking was demolished and replaced with open space as multi-story parking structures are provided. Echo the sentiments of Commissioner Hart about the garage. I think the comment, the underground garage on, on the Rockville Pike side, while we appreciate the staff recommending three other alternate locations and encouraging the Bethesda staff to explore those, I think it's premature to decline, to say we, we don't understand the impacts when we only have a, even just a basic concept and a preliminary site, again, for this preliminary plan. There is a, at least one place I know that is, has successfully done an underground garage next to a historic building, and it has worked well at such as the National Cathedral. The sailor and support facility is referenced on page twenty-nine. It's very close, if you look at that site, it's very close to retail, major retail and entertainment centers in Bethesda and Rockville, but it seems to be an effort, and, and if it was a stated objective, that the intent of that campus is to become a self-contained twenty-four, seven operations, then I think it would be appropriate to look at fast food restaurants, the gas stations, and bowling alleys. If that's not the case, we should perhaps shift some of those functions to the neighboring locations that have really better selections and, and better hours. Page thirty talks about new surface parking. It talks about also structured parking wherever it's possible, so wouldn't that also be a good candidate for a multi-story parking structure as opposed to some more surface parking? And again, any surface parking should be, we should look at permeable surfaces. Airfield operations on page thirty-two, it talks about adding thirteen thousand square feet by two minutes pavement, perhaps pervious payments that I think are currently available and are suitable for heliport operations, should be explored. Transportation, we talked about the one to three ratios already. Dr. Sater was correct about health, there's a study by APA, the folks that do facility management for universities as well as physicians for the environment, that talks about traffic congestion and incidents, increases incidence of environmentally induced asthma and respiratory effects. NIH is a, is a good example with fifty percent of the patients during the period that I was there, immunosuppressed for bone marrow transplant, cancer treatments and so forth, so it's very important to have a, a healthy environment. There was a comment about the hundred parking spaces for construction workers. The solution that we found at the Pentagon when we saturate, when the numbers of contractors exceeded the allowed parking, was they used off-site locations. We probably ended up paying for that, and then the contractor shuttled workers onto the campus morning and, and evening. And lastly, bike share, we talked about that previously, the same observation. Well, bike share, the business model maybe prevents somebody from riding to work, parking the bike, and then paying at the end of the day. It does promote, I think, short back and forth trips. So many positive things in the report, but those are some of the, the constructive comments that we would add to, to improve the, the plan.
Thank you. Other comments or suggestions or questions, Mr. Goning and, and Mr. May?
I did want to commend the Navy for their impressive improvements in mode split. I would say that maybe the folks across the street could see, could learn something. But I would also say that they have a lot of ideas, including bike share, to further improve telework, other things to further improve their performance, and yet they, they're not suggesting any further gains in mode split going forward, so I, I would urge them to be more ambitious with respect to that. To the extent they don't have a bike framework plan, I think bike, a, a couple of bike share stations at either end of the campus might be useful for the short trips that could happen there, and that would be worth doing. I don't know, for both campuses, the notion of pedestrian access through the campus, to be able to get more conveniently to the metro, my colleague, Mr. Cass, Commissioner Cass made that suggestion, I think that's a good one. I understand security, heightened security concerns, but most of the threat I think people are worried about are, are vehicles, and so if we can let pedestrians traverse the campus, that that might be very helpful. Let's see. I guess that, that would be it. I, I would suggest that if they were to continue to make even a fraction of the progress that they've made on their, on their TMP, that, that the need for eight hundred and eighty-six additional spaces might be either obviated or reduced, which would be quite a cost savings because the structured parking space is going to be, you know, thirty to sixty thousand dollars a space, and, you know, given the, the trajectory of their changing mode split, that they, that they could probably figure out a way to, to, to reduce that number. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. May, did you have?
Yeah, I just had one question, which is similar to the last project, which is the, do you know what the, the, the percentage of employees who are on the campus at a peak period? Is it as similarly high number as across the street, or is it lower? Because this is more of a twenty-four hour kind of facility.
I don't know directly. My, my understanding is it's, it's similar to across the street. They do have different periods in which they arrive-
Yeah.
-at the campus, so at, at this campus, they arrive a little bit earlier in the morning and, and leave earlier in the afternoon. But I, I think it still peaks in terms of-
Right. I mean, undoubtedly, it's going to be highest during the day, during normal hours, because there are a lot of people who work there during regular business hours, but it just, it seemed to me that given the, the amount of twenty-four hour care that's given there, that there's going to be a significantly different percentage of folks, and that may be one of the reasons why their mo, their, their parking ratio is a little bit better. Certainly doesn't account for all of it, but I'm not sure, I mean, it would, it would be just, it would just be interesting to know what that percentage is. Maybe next time, is there a next time on this? We have-
Yeah.
Comments on draft master plan, so we'll see it again. So it'll be interesting to know what that is at that point, and I would reserve judgment on exactly how good this ratio is until I know that number. Thanks.
Mr. Hart?
Mr. Hinkle?
Yes.
Was, in the draft that, that you reviewed, was there any discussion of the steps necessary to achieve these new development targets? You know, when they take the buildings down, there's one diagram on page twenty-four that shows temporary medical facilities in G Lot. That has implications on parking. If you start putting buildings where you've got parking now and you're already maxed out, does the master plan address the temporary issues of staging, parking, construction workers, in order to give a kind of a comprehensive look at how you're going to come from where we are now to the future? And in the, the previous presentation, there's a comment about not wanting to have any staging or construction parking in the buffer area of NIH. Does this master plan address the phasing and how you move the pieces around in order to achieve the objectives?
If I could, I'd invite the applicant to come in and describe that. There, there is some discussion within the master plan as well as in the, the draft EIS.
I'm just asking if, if that's being addressed, not necessarily to, to try and critique it, but clearly, this is a very densely developed campus, and as soon as you start moving around pieces, it has a lot of, you know, anticipated and unanticipated consequences. So the better you can play, play the war game, the better off you're going to be at the end.
Sure, so I can comment about that. I'm Burr Vogel, I am a Civil Engineer Corps Officer in the Navy, and I'm the base public works officer as also, as well as the Director of Construction Contracting. So I think the first question was, what do we do with construction contractors, right? They are required by their contracts to shuttle in from onsite parking or take metro. So that's what they do, they're allowed a limited amount of onsite parking within their construction sites only. And, and so we're so restricted on laydown anyway that that's just pretty much negligible. The other question was about the shell game of, we're building on, you know, usable parking right now. So that is, basically, we have some, some garages in construction right now. The Sanctuary Hall Garage is being put up as we speak, and so we're pretty much flat. As we draft construction over the next five years, we're pretty well flat for, for the intermediate term, and then as we get some of these new garages, like the Underground Garage, or wherever that ends up being cited, as well as the University Garage in, in, which might start construction in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, so about the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen timeframe, we get a little bit better off from the standpoint of the, the tightness of parking where we are now. But even that is, is really focused on patients and visitors, not so much staff. Staff are going to stay crunched to the extent that they are now. And if possible, as, as y'all mentioned, with transportation management, we might like to, to even decrease the amount of staff coming on base and, and open even more up for patients and visitors. Good?
Good.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Hearing none. Is there a motion on the EDR?
The amended EDR?
Has it been amended?
I, I recommend an amendment to the EDR. On page three, the EDR reads, "Does not support and urges reconsideration of both the Underground Park and Garage," and then it talks about option one. I, I recommend we change the do not, "Does not support and urges," words to, "Recommends further study to mitigate adverse impacts on existing landscape and views or reconsideration."
Second. Okay.
And I would also then add a recommendation for the inclusion of stormwater management, forest conservation, historic resources, and energy conservation elements to the plan.
Okay. Can you read that again slowly?
Yes. The, the first one replaces the first five words, "does not support and urges," with, "recommends further study to mitigate adverse impacts on existing landscape and views or," for both the first two recommendations, and then adds an additional recommendation. It says, "Recommends the inclusion of stormwater management, forest conservation, historic resources, and energy conservation elements in the plan."
And that goes where?
That can go in any place.
Okay. That's, that's a, that's a new one, not an amendment.
It's a new one.
Okay. So stormwater management, forest conservation?
Historic resources and energy conservation.
Do you have that, Ms. Young? Okay. Is there a second to that proposed, those proposed amendments and then discussion?
Second.
It's been seconded, is, are there discussions on the amendments? Hearing none, all in favor of the amendments in a block, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The amendments are adopted. Now we're back to the vote on an amended EDR. Is there a recommend, is there a?
Have I moved the amended EDR?
Thank you. It's been, the amended EDR has been moved and seconded, not sensing further discussion. All in favor of the amended EDR, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's passed. Thank you very much, Mr. Hinkle. Agenda item five C is the new urban design element and amendments to the preservation and historic features element of the comprehensive plan, and we have Mr. Zayton.
Okay. Okay, this, this next agenda item is the request to release as a draft the new federal urban design element, and we are coupling this with the update to the preservation and historic features element. All of this is part of the federal elements of the comprehensive plan for the National Capitol. So just to kind of organize this before we get into this, the federal urban design element is a, is a brand new element, which focuses federal policies on Washington's public realm and character, and I'm going to spend the bulk of my presentation on this new element. We are releasing, also releasing the preservation and historic features element, and this update is relatively minor, but it's looking to update the existing element, which deals with federal actions to protect historic resources. And the request before the commission is to release both of these elements for a ninety day public comment period. But again, the bulk of my presentation will be on the new element, the new urban design element. So why are we doing this element, and what's the goal of establishing urban design policies? Basically, this establishes a stake in the ground on ideas related to urban design for the federal government. It looks to provide greater definition on the federal interest and the character of the city and region. It offers design guidance to federal agencies, and then also it fosters compatibility with the district's urban design element. Under the National Capitol Planning Act, the district elements and the federal elements need to be compatible. The district currently has a urban design element as part of their portion of the comprehensive plan, and to this point, the federal government has not had one. Although there have been policies scattered throughout the comprehensive plan that deal with urban design, this is really the first new urban design focus for the federal elements. So just to give a little bit of background, we've been working on this new element for the better part of a year, and this has been driven by an urban design task force, which was formed last summer. The goal of the task force was to work with staff in constructing these policies and, and bringing these together. Many members of the commission were on the task force, which was chaired by Commissioner Wright of the General Services Administration. Then we had some, some representatives that were not on the commission, which include representatives from the Commission of Fine Arts, Architect of the Capitol, and then we had a gentleman from the Northern Virginia Regional Commission, because we wanted to bring a, a regional element to the task force. The task force met five times over the past year. The first couple meetings focused on higher level urban design discussions, and the last three were really workshops, really focusing on the policies. So we wanted to, to thank the task force for their time. We've also been doing public outreach. On January twenty-fourth, we held a- On January 24th, we held a full-day kind of series of workshops. The first one in the afternoon focused on stakeholders that we invited from around the region to come in and provide input into some ideas for the urban design element. And then we had a follow-up workshop that same evening, which was for the general public to provide ideas. These were some of the things that we heard in regards to federal facilities and property. We heard a lot of comments about improving security, improving overall design, enhancing and activating public space, and really providing connections for federal facilities and campuses. When it came to the qualities and kind of the important characters of the capital city, we heard a lot of comments regarding the iconic sense of place of Washington, the human scale of the city, the water fronts. So we heard a lot of really good ideas to kind of kick off our development of the policies. We've also been doing a lot of online outreach where people can get, come through our website and provide ideas on what they think is important to urban design and the federal government in the National Capitol region. And this is something that's generated statistically, so the bigger the words, the more we heard it from people who came through our website. So we thought this was a good tool for outreach for the element. So the element begins with a goal statement, and this is the draft urban design element. The federal government should provide and support a public realm that is reflective of Washington's heritage and role as the nation's capital. And I think the big, important piece here is urban design means a lot of things to different people, but the main focus of this element is going to be on the public realm and how it reflects Washington as a capital city. So we thought this was a good starting point for the element. And again, urban design is, really deals with a lot of different issues. So we tried to organize this in two different categories. The first being what we call the character of the capital. And this really talks about what are some of the things within the capital city and region that the federal government should be interested in that really creates the city and region as a capital city, that also combines those qualities with Washington DC and the region as a local city and region. And then, secondly, our policies which deal with federal facilities and property. The federal government being the biggest landholder and employer in the region, it's really important to provide policies that guide how they develop their buildings and their property in a way that it can enhance the public realm in the area. So to talk about the character of the capital first, our discussions with the public and the task force started off with a discussion of key qualities. What are the really important characteristics of the area that really make Washington special as a capital region and city? And then we started to think about policy areas from there. Are there certain geographic areas that are more important than others? Are there certain qualities within those areas that are more important than others? And then we developed policies from that thought process. So just to look at some of the key qualities that we discussed, the presence of federal institutions and icons, not only in the city and the region, we thought were really important. And we really wanted to keep the regional aspect to this because there are important federal assets in the region that are important to Washington's character, things such as commemorative works such as Iwo Jima, Dulles Airport, the National Park Service parkways. Other key qualities included the legacy of the Longfond and McMillan Plans. We talked a lot about the horizontal skyline character composed of signature civic buildings and national icons as an important quality for the city. Some other key qualities included the clear and distinct view corridors, the complementary relationship between streets and buildings, the openness and scale of streets. We talked about things such as the important spaces formed by circles, squares, and parks within Washington, and a lot of those are products of the Longfond Plan and other planning efforts. Gateways and water fronts were also really important things. And we heard a lot about that in our public workshops as important qualities that shaped the character of Washington DC. Okay, so there's a lot of material in the element, and I'm not going to go through all this verbatim, so I just want to give the higher overview of the ideas. These will all be released for a 90-day public comment period, so there'll be plenty of time to tweak the language. But to go over the policy areas and looking at the character of the capital, we divided them into three kind of units. One being the Longfond City and its setting, policies which deal with that area. Secondly is the District of Columbia, that area of Washington DC outside of the Longfond City. And third is the National Capitol Region. So just to kind of use this basic diagram, this is what we looked at while looking at the Longfond City. Obviously, the Longfond City is defined by the Longfond Plan, which was done as the first federal planning effort which formed the city in 1790. It is the highest concentration of federal properties. It contains Pennsylvania Avenue, which we thought was a really important symbolic piece of the Longfond City. But beyond that, we also thought it was important to include its setting, which is kind of the area that creates the setting for the city. It helps establish the skyline. And this area is known as the topographic bowl, which I'll discuss a little bit more in the policies. So to get into the policies, and again, I'm not going to read these verbatim, I just want to talk about the ideas. This area of the element talks about how the federal government should implement and support policies that respect the relationship of building height and street width within the Longfond City as defined by the Height of Buildings Act. It talks about maintaining or reestablishing the integrity of the original Longfond Plan rights of way. We thought that those original bones of the city were very important. It talks about encouraging private and public building design that respects public spaces because those public spaces within the Longfond City are so important. And it also lays out kind of a policy idea for Pennsylvania Avenue, talking how Pennsylvania Avenue should be a multi-middle street bordered by an actively programmed public realm. And this is in anticipation of change that may come to Pennsylvania Avenue in between the Capitol and the White House as an important ceremonial boulevard. The policies also talk about supporting the character of the federal triangle and the design of the National Mall as established in the McMillan Plan, trying to respect that legacy. It talks about fostering active, enhanced, and publicly accessible water fronts. There's over probably 47 miles of waterfront in the core of Washington, most of which is owned by the federal government, and supporting that those water fronts be enhanced as an important part of the city. It talks about upholding the design of transportation infrastructure that respects view sheds, making sure that those important corridors and view sheds are respected. We also added some policies regarding the setting of the Longfond City. And this can really be thought about in three different components, one being the Florida Avenue escarpment, which is the boundaries of Florida Avenue going north and the hillside, Arlington Ridge just west of the city, and then Arlington Hills to the southeast, which really provide the setting for the Longfond City and its character. Interestingly enough, there were already some policies in our comprehensive plan that dealt with the topographic bowl and that setting. And these come from our parks and open space elements. We thought it would be important to combine this into the urban design element. The policies talk about preserving the green setting of the Anacostia Hills, having the Florida Avenue escarpment's natural definition of the Longfond Plan boundaries be maintained. And then also, having development on the natural slopes of Arlington Ridge, respect those natural contours and the setting of the Longfond City. And finally, within the Longfond City and its setting, a portion of the comprehensive plan, we discussed a lot about street lighting and lighting of exterior lighting in general. And we have a general policy about exterior lighting that respects the hierarchy among memorials, monuments, and important civic buildings because we thought this was an important character for the Longfond City, particularly at nighttime. So stretching outside of the Longfond City into the District of Columbia, there are still some federal assets and federal qualities that are really important in this area. Rock Creek Park, there are federal properties and other qualities that are important to be addressed in the urban design element. So some of the proposed policies look at encouraging building heights that respect symbolic buildings and are proportionate to the streets on which they are located, just to maintain that street quality and those view corridors, particularly as they relate to the Longfond City. And also to reinforce views too in settings of federal properties and important civic buildings which exist. And also to encourage private development to enhance the character of any adjacent federal facilities or federal parkland. This is just kind of a stake-in-the-ground idea that any related private development should focus on enhancing important federal assets out in the city outside of the Longfond City core.
I'll just interrupt you, David.
Sure.
What do you mean by stake in the ground?
Just this being the comp plan, these are policies, these are goal statements. That's just kind of my way of describing that. I mean, this is not zoning regulations. It's meant to just reflect the general approach that we're trying to go for.
But why is some things a stake in the ground? I don't, I don't understand. It sounds like it's a territorial thing, a stake in the ground.
No, no, that's just, that's just a phrase I'm using. Maybe I'm using the wrong phrase.
They're aspirational.
They're aspirational.
Particularly without pre-existing soil borings of where stakes.
It's just my way of reflecting the idea. I don't know, maybe, maybe I'm using, maybe that's Midwest.
You're enthusiastic about that expression. You've said it three times, so I'm just kind of trying to.
Are you keeping track?
Well, I wrote it down the first time because I was like, I didn't know exactly what you meant by it.
Yeah, it just meant, like Commissioner Wright said, as an aspirational statement.
Okay.
Okay, so moving outside of the District of Columbia into the National Capitol Region, there are still important federal assets and federal qualities existing in the National Capitol Region that we wanted to reflect in the urban design element. Things such as commemorative areas or commemorative sites, important historic facilities such as Dulles Airport and others, and then also the National Park Service parkways. So to go over these policies, the federal government should support policies that reinforce the prominence of gateways and the experience of entering Washington. We wanted to talk about the approach to Washington DC and that experience that visitors have coming into symbolic areas. Also to maintain the prominence of federal icons and federal parkland by ensuring surrounding development is complementary. We wanted to include some policies that relate to the characteristics of the National Park Service parkways. And these policies, like the policies regarding the topographic bowl, are already existing in the comp plan and come from our parks and open space element. But we thought it was important to have policies that talk about the character of the National Park Service parkways and ancillary development. And then also, the region's tree canopy, we thought was an important quality that we should have reflected in the urban design element. Additionally, there are water fronts outside of the District of Columbia or the Longfond City that we thought were important. And again, these are also some existing comp plan policies that talk about public access to regional water fronts and avoid the creation of physical barriers to these water fronts. So that's the overview of the first chunk of the urban design element. And those, again, those deal with the character of the capital city and kind of the federal government's interest or role in that. The second piece of it deals with federal facilities and property. And these are policies that help to guide the development and management of federal buildings and property as they relate to creating a good public realm. And we divided these into four focus areas because we thought these were really important goals that should be focused on within this portion of the urban design element. That is inspiring building design, activating street levels, integrating buildings and campuses, and enhancement of public spaces. We thought that federal properties and facilities should strive to achieve some of these areas. So to talk about these draft policies in the federal building design area, we want to have a very aspirational statement about how federal buildings should reflect their importance in the National Capitol Region and be designed to the highest quality. We also think federal facilities and federal building design should complement their context by providing consistency with the adjacent urban fabric. And this can include things such as scale, materials, street walls, or heights where We also wanted to reflect some of the work that's been occurring throughout the federal government, but more specifically in our ECO district, where federal buildings should look to implement sustainable site and building design on a precinct level as much as possible. And also to achieve a balance between iconic design and infill design. And really, this is a, this is a general policy statement about how not everything needs to be iconic. Sometimes it's appropriate to have good infill depending on the context of the site. In looking at the activating street levels policies, we thought it was important for federal facilities to incorporate publicly accessible retail and/or cultural resources into their street levels. And we also talked a lot about blank walls in the federal, in the urban design element. It's important that federal facilities look to avoid blank walls where a building needs adjacent public space and to make their street levels as publicly accessible as possible, that this would be beneficial to the public realm. In looking at integrating federal buildings and campuses, and this applies to some of the larger campus facilities that are operating within the region, the main theme of our policies are really about integrating these campuses, where campuses, building yards, plazas, courtyards, open spaces should all be as integrated with the adjacent community as possible. And programming open space areas with publicly accessible amenities was really important to enhancing federal buildings and campuses' integration with the public realm. We also talked about locate, the location of appropriate amenities on federal buildings and campuses. This includes locating appropriate amenities, including retail and even parking facilities so they are accessible to the local community, so these things can be shared. And also that the entrances should be designed in a pedestrian-friendly way and should enhance the adjacent public realm. And also, we thought it was really important that there be a policy that the federal facility managers consult and respect the design guidelines or goals of the local host community. Many communities have certain goals and design guidelines that should be considered when designing a federal building or campus. In the fourth area, when it comes to federal facilities and property, the enhancement of public spaces, the federal government should minimize public space obstruction such as vehicular curb cuts and orient service areas away from major streets to avoid negatively impacting the public realm. We also talked a lot about memorial landscapes. And the general notion here is that the federal government should provide memorial landscapes that are adaptable and programmed with a balance of active and passive uses. And this is just acknowledging the dual role that these public spaces can play as both a commemorative site and a recreation site in open space, given its context. Continuing in the enhancement of public spaces area, we thought it was important to have a policy regarding the programming of public spaces around federal buildings. So the federal government should provide where possible well landscaped areas and amenities in public spaces. I think a good example of this may be the US DOT Building and other areas where there are seating and other kind of good art elements and things like that that help to try to activate that public realm. And also, the federal government should utilize sustainable features in their landscapes and adjacent public space where possible. And this is acknowledging that a lot of these sustainable improvements occur in public space, and we wanted the comprehensive plan to support that. Okay, that is a very quick overview of the urban design element. There, like I said, there's a lot of material there. There's also an accompanying narrative. And this will be available for 90-day public comment period, not only from the general public, but also agencies. So we'll be looking to refine that after we get comments. But we're also releasing an update to the preservation and historic features element. Our update is relatively minor. So just to give an overview of what we're proposing, we're proposing to title it the Historic Preservation Element. Right now, it's called the Preservation and Historic Features Element, and we thought just focusing on historic preservation made it more simple. We also revised the goal statement to kind of reflect what we're doing in the update, which is focusing the policies on the plan of the City of Washington, which is considered the Longfond and McMillan Plans in historic preservation processes. So beyond updating the policies to reflect that, we're also adding some new policies regarding historic assets in the region, the adaptive reuse of historic properties in federal campus master planning, and the integration of sustainability measures and preservation. So relatively minor update, but we are adding some new policies that we want to put out for public comment. Okay, so the next steps. So given the commission's action today, we should be releasing a 90-day public comment, releasing the elements for a 90-day public comment period, which will run from November 5th to February 4th. So we're giving a lot of time, given the breadth of material and the fact that the holidays will be occurring in this period, because we really want to get a lot of input on this. We will be holding a public event on November 14th. This will be held at the District Architecture Center on 7th Street from 6:30 to 8:30, just to help promote the new element and to get some comments. And this will be on both of the elements. After the comment period. After the comment period is closed, staff will revise both elements considering public and agency comments. So we'll do a lot of time revising and working through any issues that come up. And then, once we've done those revisions, we will bring them back to the commission for adoption and incorporation into the comprehensive plan, so. So with that, the executive director's recommendation is to release, authorize the release of the draft policies in both of these elements for a 90-day public review and comment period. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mrs. Aiden. Very good. I know a lot of work went into this from the task force. It's very comprehensive, and I want to thank Commissioner Wright for her time and dedication to overseeing this, this task force as well. Thank you. The EDR, the action requested is simply to release this for a 90-day public comment period. Is there any comments or questions regarding the document? Mr. Gunning?
Kind of a minor thing with respect to the Historic Preservation Element, and maybe this is not the appropriate place to do it. There's language there about encouraging adaptive reuse that's important. But I know GSA, in part because of the work Mina is doing, over time, there's going to be a lot of buildings potentially released for, out of the federal inventory for reuse. And Peter, right now, there's language about, about the Secretary of Interior Standards that makes it sound all or nothing in terms of the buildings, whether they can be touched or not touched as, how would I put this? That, that the way that we have been releasing buildings doesn't encourage their adaptive reuse. The federal government has to know upfront if they are going to be altered and propose the mitigation upfront. Otherwise, they can't be altered. And so...
That's not correct. The, when, at least for GSA's part, we, we don't have the authority to dictate usage, you know, afterwards, but the Secretary of Standard, the Secretary of Interior Standards, generally speaking, do go as, with a covenant. But that doesn't preclude their adaptive use.
That's not, that's not the opinion that I'm getting, but we'll, we'll, maybe we'll take this up after. But when we talk about encouraging adaptive reuse, I think that there's maybe some tweaks that could be made to, to help encourage that. So that's kind of one minor question. This is a huge service, I think, in terms of, in terms of providing very explicit guidance to federal agencies, in terms of what's being sought with respect to urban design and how it integrates with the rest of the city. And I think that is tremendous. And I think a lot of it is, is really, really helpful. There, there remain some things that I raised during the, the task force that continue to be a concern, that, that, that do seem to be a stake in the ground when it comes to dictating how private development occurs in the city and how it, you know, there's language here that ensuring private development enhances any adjacent federal building or property. And I think that's incredibly subjective. Not only is there so much federal property across, you know, around the city, but that some of it doesn't have a character that deserves enhancement, if you know what I mean. Some of it's warehouse buildings and other stuff that you'd rather hide or mask. So in other places, you talk about iconic and, and significant. I think that at a minimum, we're talking about only those very significant properties or buildings where that would be the case. Ditto with things that, that, that limit height outside the Launfaun City. But those things, I think, that are focused on the character of the Capitol that go outside the Launfaun City, those are things that we'll, we'll be sending you some comments on. But the focus on federal facilities and properties, I think, is fabulous, really, really helpful, and will, will be an enormous addition to the federal element of the comp plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reventer?
Some other positive comments. Appreciate very much the leadership of Commissioner Wright, leading this team. It was very enjoyable and beneficial. Some of those meetings were very heated, which is a good thing.
Chocking.
We appreciate the, the leadership of David Kepeson on track. Just two comments about accessible retail, ground floor accessibility and security. And trying to, there's some language on page 22 and 23 of the report about promoting retail, accessible ground floor retail. Is there someplace that, that is doing that, that is, that is currently a model in DC that some of the commissioners perhaps could share with us? We were concerned, some of us are concerned about, for example, shoppers being able to penetrate what it would normally be a secure perimeter. And if you do provide that, is there some additional cost to reinforce the, the surrounding walls and then the floors above in order to provide that type of, of retail experience?
It's, it's not a great example, but the, in my opinion, the most street-enhancing part of that enormously long US DOT building is the Starbucks on the corner, not the other, not the benches and the other stuff and the history of transportation on the walkway. But, but it did end up having to be blast-proof and separate and reinforced. And there are probably, you know, different ways to do that. I think GSA's treatment of its own headquarters building and the differentiation that was made among security levels. I realize it's not complete and it hasn't happened yet, but the, but the idea that, that not every single function and every single office is exactly the same level of security, which always happens to be the maximum level, the level you'd protect the secretary at, I think is an important innovation that might, in the future, obviate the need to have that level of blast protection for an exterior commercial use.
Okay. The last comment was about security. There's a good language in here about those security elements being related to the surrounding context, so it doesn't look like, some places we just have boulders adjacent to the building and it doesn't fit, fit the environment whatsoever. So I think the, the language in there perhaps could be strengthened, but I think it's a good, a good start. Thank you.
Mr. Cass?
I have just a question and a comment. On this section A8 on page 16 dealing with the topographic bowl, would that, would that language result in new NCPC approval authority for development? Or is that something that would be more advisory? I'm just not sure how, how this...
That would be more, be more advisory. I mean, as the comprehensive plan, these are all policies. This doesn't change our legal authorities at all under the Planning Act. It's just more of, these are some things that our, our agency and our commission thinks are good ideas, essentially.
Okay.
And if there's, you know, if there were ever an issue where a project or, or something was brought before the commission that might relate to that, then it might, it might guide the staff discussion, but it doesn't change our legal authorities.
Okay. I think on that, the question is, I mean, whether it may be a great idea to preserve that geographic feature, just the, the degree that it, it is, reaches a threshold of federal interest. Also, related to the NPS parkways section, I guess, section C3, which talks about maintaining the, the National Park Service parkways. That, I think that there, there's currently some dangerous traffic conditions that really affect the enjoyment of the parkways. And I think 3D at the top of 19 might attempt to get at that. But the, the meaning of that 3D is a little bit confusing. So it seems like it would be nice to have something that, that gets more directly at, you know, improving the ability of pedestrians and cyclists to enjoy the parkways with better access and facilities and, and reducing the negative impacts of automobiles.
Okay. Well, we'll revisit that language.
I, I would just want to caution that there, there are many people who are interested in that issue with regard to the specific parkways in Washington. So you want to look carefully at where those, where that interest has been taken and how it's been expressed. I'm being a little bit oblique, but there's, there's interest on Capitol Hill and exactly what happens with the parkways. And that's been expressed to us. We can enlighten you on those things.
Okay.
So we don't want to be steering into a policy that would wind up causing greater consternation among certain parties.
One additional comment about DC roadways. Clearly, the, Washington is an evolving city. If you think about the development of the automobile more than 100 years or so after the font plan was developed, I think we've done a remarkable job of preserving those original cartways. Remember how heated discussions about preserving the Maryland Avenue Cartway in conjunction with the Eisenhower Memorial Project is just one example. Another example might be Georgetown, where Georgetown has particularly along M Street, six lanes of traffic, two of those lanes on each side are taken up by parking. And what that does is it restricts to very small and narrow sidewalks. If anybody has walked through that area recently, you know how congested it is on every single day, particularly when the, during the, the summer when the tourists are in town. That's, that's an example of perhaps where parking on one side of the street or maybe no parking on, along the M Street in that, in that section where it crosses Wisconsin might be considered by the city in order to promote more pedestrian access.
If I may, that's, that's a perfect example of what, we don't want this urban design element to authorize for, for the NCPC to be weighing in on what happens with how we manage traffic or, or travel in Georgetown. So I respect the sentiment, and I might even agree with it. But a part of the difficulty for us is trying to determine what's the federal interest, because that's what our charge is as a commission, not what would be nice or what would be enhancing for the city or helpful to the city, but really, what's the federal interest. And I think this document is still imperfect in terms of how it, it divides the, you know, that, that line and needs a little work. But, but I appreciate the sentiment behind it. I mean, another place about determining building height based on proximity to the shoreline throughout all the waters of our, of our region, I think that's a local determination, you know, and not a, not a matter of, of federal interest. But, but we'll, we'll give you comments, and I do appreciate the effort. I think it's, especially when it pertains to guidance for federal agencies and what the commission expects to see, very, very helpful.
I think perhaps the solution might be to put a large federal building in Georgetown, and then we would have an anchor and, and a legitimate interest in that portion of town.
The EDR before is to authorize, I'm sorry, Mr. Miller.
I just had just a couple of quick, quick points. The, there's a reference to the district's population, and on page 15, it's approaching nearly 600,000 residents. I would just ask that be, say, 620, maybe, what is it, 620 now?
It's about, it's approaching 620,000 as of July 2011.
So it's probably... And I would just echo the federal interest comments that Ms. Gunning and Mr. Cass made regarding, and regarding the, the escarpment issue on page 16, 17. So is, is NCPC saying that within, when it says, "Within the western portion of the bowl, retain a horizontal skyline by relating building heights to the natural slope and rim areas of Arlington Ridge as viewed from the Capitol, the Mall, and other riverside outlooks." Are you saying that the 300 and now 400-foot-high buildings in Roslin are, are horizontal skyline, contribute to a horizontal skyline? I hope you are, because maybe you're, I'm, I'm being facetious, but it, it, there's a concern that you, this commission hasn't been able to control the heights, obviously, of the Roslin Ridge and has a certain approval authorities over the District of Columbia, which it stringently enforces as part of its responsibilities. It's just, there's a, there's just an inequality in terms of application of how this plays out. Just want to point that out, just as a comment.
Thank you.
I mean, there is an essential difference in that the Congress has determined that the height of buildings within the District of Columbia is a federal interest. That's really where the disparity occurs. I mean, I completely agree. I wish there was more ability to control what happens in the surrounding jurisdiction, because it does have an input, impact on the view sheds from the Mall and from the parkways.
I remember when this commission did, did write to the FAA trying to stop, I think the first one, that went up in Roslin.
And the, and the most recent, the, the, the new hotbed of height in Virginia is in Crystal City, where they just recently approved a building that's twice as tall as the other buildings in the vicinity.
Mr. Chairman?
This is being released for public comment, is that correct?
90 days.
I hope that historical activists and others will weigh in on this and maybe have some comments that helps support the district's position on some of these issues. I don't think they're new issues. I'm not sure we have the, the activists that we had before, but I know there's some out there someplace, and I think they should be commenting on this along with the representatives on the commission, because there are some delicate areas here that need some reinforcement by the community. And I hope they will.
I think there's still plenty of them. They come to a lot of our meetings.
The EDR before is to authorize release of this for a 90-day public comment period, sensing no further discussion. All in favor of the EDR, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Oh, so moved.
It's been moved and seconded, that the EDR be passed. Once again, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. EDR is passed unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Zaden and Ms. Wright.
I would sell my first born for a cup of coffee. Can we possibly take a break before the next thing? Is this possible? I just can't sit here and pay attention without some caffeine.
I don't know if we...
Is that rude? I mean, can we get a, can we have a break? Is that allowed?
We could take a five-minute break. So I, I don't know if there's coffee on premises. There are no, there's no coffee on premises, at least on this floor. Want to take a 10-minute break?
Please, unless everybody wants to keep going.
Let's keep going.
Okay.
Why don't we, well, we've got...
There goes my first born.
Honestly, let's go, we've got, we've got two more items. We've got two more items. Let's, let's trudge forth.
Okay.
Item number 5D is the National Museum of African American History and Culture, and we have Mr. Walton.
So, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Today, the Smithsonian submitted the National Museum of African American History and Culture for approval of final site and building plans. Let's start with some background. So as you know, the site is located here along Constitution Avenue between 14th and 15th Street and Madison Drive at the end of a row of existing museums on what was formerly the Washington Monument grounds. Since the preliminary design submission, the building's position has remained consistent. The setback is still 86 feet off of 14th Street, 234 feet off Constitution Avenue, 136 feet off of 15th Street, and it varies between 90 and 140 feet off Madison Drive, depending on where you are along the slope. Since the preliminary design submission and the final foundation approval last April, the Smithsonian has completed the slurry wall. This is a supportive excavation wall designed to keep water out of the site during, during the construction of the foundation. At the preliminary design submission last November, the commission had only a few comments associated with different aspects of the museum's design. Those were associated with the food cart shelter located here on the south side of the building near 14th Street, and just to the north of that, the guard booth design at the entry to the service drive. Because the food cart will, will only be used a few months of the year, the Smithsonian has eliminated the shelter from the design. They will instead locate utility connections in that same location. Guard booth design has been integrated into the wall of the loading dock. It's going to be of the same finish and material, so it should blend in with the surrounding context. Commission also asked that the Smithsonian open the sidewalks along 14th Street and 15th Street as soon as construction safety would permit. In response, the Smithsonian submitted a traffic construction plan, and they're still working with the Park Service, NCPC, and DC Department of Transportation to open those sidewalks as soon as possible. As I mentioned, the building's position has remained consistent. However, the height of the corona has been reduced by two feet, bringing it to alignment with the height of the corners of the Commerce Building across Constitution Avenue. The soft roof skylights shown in the image on the right top have been lowered. They're now within the boundary of the building cores, surrounded by flat panel skylights and a parapet wall. So when viewed from grade, none of, none of those elements can be seen. However, when viewed from above, say, the top of the Washington Monument, the collection of elements creates a design pattern. Building has, design has continued to evolve. The entry on the south side of the building, the main entry from the Mall, is shifted to the east. It's now aligned with the building core on that side. This has benefits visually and functionally. Visually, it opens up views to the Mall from the interior concourse of the building, unobstructed by security screening devices. And the security area is now larger and can accommodate larger crowds, and keep those groups together throughout the screening process. Both the north and south entry both have new vestibule designs. The vestibule is designed to can at the same angle as the corona and the cornice of, I'm sorry, the cap of the Washington Monument, 17 degrees. It also is clad with the material and has a finish that's similar to elements on the interior and within the landscape. The building exterior skin structure has also been modified from a suspended cable system to a vertical truss system. Budget was the main driver of this change. However, building facilities maintenance was also a consideration. New egress stairs have been added to the northwest corner of the building here. This is designed to support occupancy loads from the recently expanded history galleries below. Simple blade pickets have been used to define a railing system. These are designed in a minimalist fashion and pulled close to the building in order to reduce the impact on views across the site to the Washington Monument. They're also consistent with other railings around the perimeter of the building. The landscape design has also evolved. There are now five areas for art located within the landscape. These are both for permanent and for rotating exhibits. There are two on the north side of the building, one in the west landscape, and two in the south landscape at the main entry path to the museum from the Mall. And finally, at the Commission of Fine Arts meeting last month, the Fine Arts members emphasized that the treatment of the corona is the single most important element in the design, and that special attention should be given to the final detail, finish, and color of the corona panels. So, with that, the executive director recommends that the commission approves the final site and building plans for the National Museum of African American History and Culture, but notes that since the treatment of the corona has not been finalized, and is an important part of the design, that the commission delegates final approval of the corona finish to the executive director upon staff evaluation of the full-scale mock-up of the corona. That concludes my presentation.
So move.
Is there anything special you want to point out on the?
Oh, I'm sorry. I should have pointed out the fact that we do actually have one of those corona panels here, and it has actually improved since we saw it last month at the CFA meeting. We think it's improved.
Good.
Mr. Chairman, I don't mean to be humorous. I'm trying to be procedural. It's my experience that you put a motion on the floor before you talk about it. So, I'm making a motion that we accept it. With a second, then we can have conversation as part of the record.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. It's a procedural issue, not a humorous.
Well, we have some flexibility in Robert's rules.
Well, Robert.
Is there a second?
You have to have something on the floor to discuss, like you do in the courtroom.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Any questions? Mr. May.
Yeah. It's been a while since we've seen it in this context, and I know there's been ongoing consultation in Section 106 and agency consultations and so on. There were a couple of open issues. I mean, Park Service has had numerous concerns about this project in general, just having to do with its location and the size of it, and where the mass is placed, and so on, and all of that, as far as we're concerned at this point, you know, we're accepting what we see now, and we believe that it's been very well-designed, and they're doing as much as they can to mitigate many of the circumstances. There are a couple of open items from my perspective. One is the lighting, which we saw, I only have in my files a draft presentation from July of 2011, and I'm wondering if you reviewed something more recent than that. I mean, what we saw in this presentation was fairly encouraging, but given the sensitive location, I was hoping we'd see something a little bit more substantive in this presentation.
I think we saw something last year, the preliminary design mission on lighting. I believe they had a little bit more information in the package at that time, and we will continue to look at lighting even through the 106 process. So, lighting isn't completely resolved.
So, will there, there will be further 106 meetings at which the lighting will be presented? Is that what you're suggesting?
That's what I'm suggesting, but I'll let Smithsonian.
Yeah?
Yes.
I'm sorry, did you get a yes?
Yes, I got a yes from Brendan.
So, there will be, I'm sorry, I'm looking for the head nod. There will be.
I guess maybe you should come up, Phil can come up to the mic.
We are still looking at the site lighting back in July of.
Could you please introduce yourself? I'm sorry, for the record.
Yes, my name is Phil Frelon, representing the Frelon Ajay Bond Smith Group.
I can barely hear you, too.
Then I'll bring this closer, a bit further away. My name is Phil Frelon, representing the Frelon Ajay Bond Smith Group Design Team. And what I was saying earlier, perhaps too softly to be heard, we are continuing to study the exterior lighting. We presented an analysis back in July of '11, and that's where we are right now. And so, that continues to be a point of refinement for the design team.
So, will there be further Section 106 consultation or agency consultations on that lighting design as it's further developed?
Ann Trebridge, Smithsonian. We will continue to invite the consulting parties as necessary if there are changes to the lighting design. As per the programmatic agreement, we.
So, if anything changes, there'll be a Section 106 meeting on the lighting?
We will do that, yes.
Okay. Is there going to, what about, you've been doing separate federal agency consultations, and will that, will there be one on the subject of lighting, or will there be one that includes that subject?
Yes, if we are changing the lighting substantially from what has already been shown, we would have an agency staff meeting followed by a consulting party meeting.
Okay. I guess what I'm requesting is that since this is from July of 2011, and I have to believe that what was presented here was highly conceptual, given where you were in the design process.
Yes.
That I, we would really like to have that meeting, just to make sure that what we're seeing, what we saw here is actually capable of.
Yes, I think, we will schedule that when our design is final.
Okay. That's, okay, that's great. That's the one question I had, for you all, but don't go too far. The next question is the design of the corona. I think in the, in the EDR, you would ask that final approval of the corona finish be delegated to staff, which is fine, but I think we're, you know, again, the Park Service is very interested in seeing that and being involved in any kind of consultation with regard to that. So, will that be the subject of an agency consultation meeting as well?
Yes, we will have an agency staff meeting, and when the mock-up is constructed, we will invite representatives of agencies to come up.
Okay.
I think it's going to be in York, Pennsylvania, perhaps ready next, late next spring.
Okay. So, yeah, if you let us know with enough notice, I'm sure we'll be able to, we'll want to send somebody to see that. So.
Mr. Vence.
Three quick comments. One, piggybacking on Commissioner May. Our preference is that the executive director is not the only one that gets to have fun regarding the review of the corona. Would love to see that come before the commission. I think the CFA remarks are pretty direct and powerful. It says that "The treatment of the corona is the single most important element of design. Recommend great attention be given to determine the final detail, finish, and color to achieve the intended lacy and glimmering effect." Would love to have the corona come to the commission for review.
It wouldn't fit in the building.
Appreciate the agency, this is good enough, but.
Oh, well.
And a representation.
I see what you mean. Yeah, the mock-up itself is going to be stories tall and tested for all sorts of things, but.
We've been on field trips before. We can get notes from our mothers.
So, would, are you saying you'd like to be invited to that field trip?
No, I would like the corona to come to the commission, the presentation for.
I see.
Not necessarily the full-size mock-up. Two other quick comments. It's unfortunate that we continue to have to provide security for a wonderful facility, which is a national asset like this, but that's understandable in the environment we live in. There's a mention about reading groves and outdoor seating areas, just one suggestion. Perhaps by the time this project is finished, what is now known as a printed book, or magazine, or newspaper, may no longer exist. So, we, one suggestion we had is for folks that use electronic readers, iPads and so forth, there'd be power outlets. They could be solar-powered, but if you consider that as part of the design, otherwise, they, there would no, subject to the availability of batteries, there would be no reading going on in the reading groves. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question on the mock-up. How large is it, and does it include the night lighting component?
My name is Hal Davis, and I'm with the Frelon Ajay Bond Smith Group team, we're the architects. The mock-up is about two and a half stories tall, and it is a full baywide, which is about 36 feet wide. So, it gives you an idea of the overall size of the mock-up. It's enclosed in a testing box, because it will be there for air infiltration and other testing requirements that will be done in York, Pennsylvania. So, in answer to the question regarding how to bring it to the commission, we can certainly do that in the form of photographs. I think Ann did invite anyone who would want to come to York, Pennsylvania, to see the physical mock-up. That would be fine as well. So, your other question?
The night lighting.
The night lighting, I don't think is going to be a part of the mock-up, because the mock-up is primarily there for wind, blast, and other infiltration issues. So, the answer to that question is, it will not include that. And as Phil indicated earlier, we are still working on the design of the exterior lighting, or the lighting of the corona itself. And until that is finalized, we will not be able to come back and work with the staff on that. So, Commissioner May's question would be answered at that point.
I'd be very interested in seeing the mock-up and seeing, you know, the night lighting as it's being developed, so that we have better appreciation for what that effect would be. If we could schedule an opportunity to get up there and take a look at it, I'd love it.
It'd be sometime around, probably May or June next year.
Okay. We'll discuss that and see what we can work out. Other questions or comments? The EDR before you is for the final site and building design for the museum. All in favor of the EDR, as before, you say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it. Thank you very much, Mr. Walton. Last item on the agenda is item 6A, and it's an information presentation on memorial trends and practices in Washington, D.C. Lucy Kempf is here. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Today, I'm pleased to present the final Memorial Trends and Practices Report, which we developed in consultation with the U.S. Commission of Fine Arts and the National Park Service. And in particular, I'd like to thank Peter May for his support in the work of his office. Much of the underlying data that's included in the report was developed closely with his staff. Just a housekeeping item to get us started. This report is designed to be informational and to augment future commission actions, particularly with the comprehensive plan update. And so, we're not asking for a specific commission action at this time, but we are drafting policies and the visitor element that build from this information, so we would ask for an approval when that element comes before you. So, we have a lot of information available to us about memorials in Washington. There's extensive information on the National Park Service website, and then, of course, you've got a good superb Washington Sculpture Book, which is sort of the seminal text, and it was just updated two years ago and republished. And so, with this study, really, our agencies are taking some of our deep institutional knowledge, consolidating it, and providing it to the public in a way that's accessible and for agencies in a manner that can be analyzed, because we continue to receive a lot of very basic information from lawmakers and the public about what types of memorials we have here, how many we have, how often we're building them, how well is the process working. So, we felt that a study would complete some of the existing information that we have. We do have several agencies involved in the process, so developing a single-point resource would ensure that we're all talking about the same thing. So, that was sort of the other rationale behind doing this research. For the presentation today, I'm just going to quickly run through the Commemorative Works Act, which is the law that governs our process here in Washington, provide an overview of the study tasks. We did identify some key trends and issues that we think will continue to play a part in our conversations about memorials here in Washington, so we highlight a few of those, and then go over the next steps. So, quickly, a background on the Commemorative Works Act. This law defines memorials for National Park Service and U.S. General Services Administration lands here in the District of Columbia and Byrnes, provides guidelines on content, requires Congress to authorize each new memorial purpose by separate law. It separates the legislative from the site selection, design, construction process, which is generally delegated to the agencies. It establishes a reserve where no new commemorative works may be constructed. It requires a separate Area 1 authorization for preeminent memorials. It establishes a National Capitol Memorial Advisory Commission, or NICMAC as we call it, which is chaired by the National Park Service, and provides advice to sponsors, congressional committees, on memorial issues, and consults on sites and designs. And it also precludes donor recognition. So, that was a bit of a mouthful, but those are sort of the high points of the Commemorative Works Act. In terms of our agency's role, we do have a seat on the National Capitol Memorial Advisory Commission. We approve site and design. So, there are four tasks associated with this study, and I've gone through these pretty in-depth at previous commission meetings, so I'm just going to provide the highlights here. The study included the development of a pretty large database of memorials with a lot of different types of information. We did identify some major subject matter themes that sort of encompass our existing memorial landscape, so that we can better understand memorial content over time, sort of from the broadest perspective. We wanted to place our practice of establishing memorials in a comparative context, so we looked at practices in other capital cities. These include Ottawa, Kenborough, Berlin, London, Salt Lake City, St. Paul, and Boston. And then, finally, we looked at the sequence of decisions for some memorial projects completed here in Washington with representative issues. So, we have a large memorial on DoD land, an international gift. We had an addition to an existing memorial, and then the Victims of Communism Memorial, which is sort of a modest statue, but it does have a pretty robust online accompanying format, so I thought that was an interesting one to study. Oh, and there was a Peace Garden, which actually never came through to completion, so we sort of looked at some of the reasons why there. So, the underlying data really allowed us to report out on trends in two different ways, and the first is quantifiable. This is just an example, looking sort of broadly at memorial content over time. We can do this sort of analysis with a wide range of topics associated with memorials with the catalog. And then, second, we wanted to provide sort of a spatial analysis that could be available for public access, and so we put all of our information online and by location, hopefully in a way that would be easy for the public to review. And we got so many good comments when we, on the map that we did for Park Service lands, that we expanded the map and now include all memorials, because people were very offended that we didn't include Albert Einstein, for example, which was not congressionally authorized, but, so you can really sort on these attributes. And part of it is, we wanted to educate the public about how these projects take place, so we included the public law that authorizes them in pictures, and hopefully, this is just another way for people to learn about the projects. So, in addition to the quantifiable trend analysis, the research enabled us to look at several topics and trends, again, that I think will continue to be part of our discussions about memorials, particularly in site and design review here. The first three listed are areas where I think the agencies will continue to look at. These include site selection, international gifts, which is sort of an interesting part of that, and then balancing memorial and other park uses. The fourth, understanding authorization, is really under congressional purview, so I think that sort of prompts a different type of discussion. But these were sort of the four major topics that emerged during our research. I think site selection is one of the most interesting and challenging parts of the whole memorial process, and I think it's true in any capital city, because you're really building memorials of national significance in very iconic places. If you travel to any place in the U.S., you might find memorials to people and events that are special to that community, and often, they're located right in the place where that happened. And that's very unusual for us here in Washington, with the couple of notable exceptions, such as the "I Have a Dream" plaque. So, we have a very different criteria, and the Commemorative Works Act does provide us some guidance. The first is this nexus where memorials should be located in a place relevant to the subject of the work. So, in the instance of President Eisenhower, for example, it was noted that that site is near the Air and Space Museum and Department of Education, and so there was, these are subjects that were important to his presidency. But this is not always so clear as we look at other types of proposals. So, a question for us. So, a question for us is, you know, our city is constantly changing. How do you determine the resources that define nexus? So, these are the kinds of issues that we debate both at NICMAC and here at NCPC. Encroachment, of course, we protect existing landscapes. And then, finally, there are a range of planning and design issues that we'll look at throughout the site and design process. So, these are all really familiar terms to planning and design professionals, but they may not be to memorial sponsors who vary in their type of organization. And so, we think that it would be very useful to publish a memorial process manual that helps sponsors better understand the criteria established by Congress, but also to better anticipate some of the types of issues that we're going to look at during site selection and design. We also have a memorial and museums master plan, which has been pretty successful. It has helped to guide six memorial projects off of the National Mall, which was one of its sort of founding goals. And I think at some point, we'll want to provide an update to that document. That may not be the first thing that we do, but I think down the road, that would be an important step. And I think we should continue this sort of online presence and try to digitize some of the two-win plan work. And so, you can really help sponsors understand the different parts of the city that they may not be familiar with and that may be appropriate for future memorials. So, a second topic that we looked at relates to international gifts. As a global diplomatic center, DC is home to more than 180 foreign missions, and this is a really important responsibility and also adds sort of an interesting prestige to the city. We have a long history of accepting international gifts that honor foreign distinguished persons and significant events. Some international gifts, though, not all, are built as commemorative works. And there are a couple of sort of technical aspects of this. I hope it's not too much inside baseball, but essentially, the Commemorative Works Act requires that memorials be related to American history. So, depending on the way that the international gift is framed, it may not meet sort of that basic standard. During our case study research, we came across a number of capital cities that had developed policies that directly guide memorials from other countries and how they should be designed, their tone, and located. So, I think there are some options for us should we want to pursue this. And the second issue really goes back to nexus, because nexus really isn't always very clear in the case of a foreign gift. Our research does reveal that memorials of international themes are concentrated on Massachusetts Avenue, 16th Street, and Virginia. And a question for us is whether or not we would say that the creation of these corridors in and of themselves is a nexus and a reason to locate future memorials on these corridors. Alternatively, are there other locations we could consider for international gifts? We don't have any specific guidance today that addresses these questions, but I think there are some opportunities there. We do provide some broad guidance in the comprehensive plan. I should say, we're in the process of developing some very broad guidance in the comp plan update that you will see in the visitor element. So, there are some policies that we're working on here. And then, one thing we noted in our research is that other places, such as Canberra, actually identify infrastructure needs and work with embassies to help enhance their city as a foreign gift as opposed to building a permanent memorial. So, I think there are some other opportunities. It's a matter of kind of identifying those things and then having the right conversations. The third topic that we looked at that sort of kept reemerging is balancing memorial and other park uses. According to the Congressional Research Service, when the CWA was under deliberation, one of the committee reports suggested that the law was needed because of the numerous memorial sponsors seeking projects and the myriad of uses that occur on parkland. And so, that was one of the original reasons to have the Commemorative Works Act. And so, this intersection of commemorative uses in an urban context, I think, is really interesting, and it's quite different from the kind of conversation we might have, you know, about a Gettysburg or another place where they build a lot of memorials. So, if one of the hallmarks of a successful public realm is adaptability or multifunctional spaces, and I think it's useful to look at examples here of places that are able to accommodate both ceremonial and other activities. But I think this is particularly something we're going to continue to look at, especially as we move away from, you know, statues situated in a green to more complex landscape designs. Interestingly, in the bottom right-hand corner, this is an early photo of the District of Columbia War Memorial. And I picked it because it sort of captures an underlying and maybe inherent tension. What is the relationship between sacred space and public space in places that have memorials? What is the placemaking sort of component of commemoration? And when I say placemaking, I mean, how do we want people to really experience the place?
Is that kind of a ban shell use? Is that how that is?
Yes, it was a ban stand. Mm-hmm. And the Park Service has just completed a really wonderful renovation of this project. So, Lincoln Park is under jurisdiction of the National Park Service, and it sits in one of Washington's really superb neighborhoods. I had an opportunity to live here for several years, and this was our neighborhood park. And it includes two playgrounds, a panel green, and a lot of seating, and it also includes two national memorials. And so, I think this mixture of uses is appropriate for a neighborhood setting, and I'm not suggesting that this is the right mix of uses for every memorial project that we see, but I think it illustrates in a very simple way one type of mix of uses that we do have in the city. There's been a lot of scholarly literature recently and information in newspapers that sort of argue that we're moving away from this towards more complex landscape designs. And we see comments that we're building our memorial landscapes, who are also adding visitor amenities as well. So, I think that this is an ongoing dialogue. Most recently, we saw the Dr. Martin Luther King Memorial Project, and it did include a small building to the west that provided important visitor amenities. But we worked closely with the Park Service and the sponsor to ensure that it didn't detract from the memorial elements. And so, again, this is just an issue that I think we'll continue to see. An alternative is the Navy Memorial Project, which was able to locate a sort of ancillary visitor amenities in a naval heritage center in an existing building. This is not always possible. Not every park that we have that is under consideration for memorial happens to be, you know, seated next to a building that's available for this type of use, but I think that the model does work, and it's a successful urban commemorative space. So, we are, we are looking at this topic in the visitor element, so you will see that in several months. We are working on some policies that will try to address this conversation. And so, the last, the last piece that we looked at had to do with authorization and memorial subjects. In the seven or so years that I've worked at NCPC, I would say the most common question that we get from the public, from lawmakers, from journalists, is how do we arrive at memorial subjects? So, based on that, I've always thought that this piece of the process is perhaps the least understood. Only Congress can authorize each new memorial subject by separate law. Then usually, it's in a request, usually, it's in response to a request from a committed citizens group, and we have a very long tradition of building our memorials this way. So, this sets up a couple of challenges for us from a planning perspective because you don't really know what types of projects are going to be coming down the pike in 10 or 15 years. And so, I think we've approached our planning work to be as flexible as possible for the different types of memorials that might be, might be designed in 10 or 15 years. So, the two-win plan and the framework plan, I think you will see that. And a piece of it is because this is really more of a responsive role. Oh, and I should mention, excuse me, just a reminder, the agencies participate in, at advisory capacity through the National Capitol Memorial Advisory Commission. And so, we wanted to think about how this consultation role that we play, and this is really where we focused our attention in this study, this agency participation. So, we looked at the decision-makers in these other capital cities, and it really, it varies so widely how decisions are made about memorial subject and how, you know, planning and design professionals might provide comments. And so, if you're really interested in learning about this, we will have the extensive case studies online, and it is kind of fascinating. And so, and so, as I mentioned, we really wanted to try to focus any future work we did through the, through the National Capitol Memorial Advisory Commission. Since one of the criteria of the Commemorative Works Act is historical significance, I think we could look at other programs that use similar criteria, such as the National Historic Landmarks Program, and understand how they invite historians' perspectives. So, that's something we might look at. We're always looking at opportunities to improve our public engagement regarding memorial subjects. Again, it is, it is challenging because the projects are introduced one at a time, and it's through legislation. But, you know, NICMAC has just opened a new website, and I think it's going to, there's a lot of opportunity there to, to let people know sort of how the process works. So, just to sort of summarize here, I think you'll see immediately a start on the memorial process manual, and we'd like to bring in all of the agencies, including the General Services Administration, that have a role in the memorial process, to talk about how to best do that. We are looking at continuing to enhance our guidance through NICMAC, and I think that in the visitor element, which you will have before you in the coming months, you will see some of the policies, some new, some revised as a result of this study. So, with that, I welcome any questions. concludes my presentation.
Mr. Chairman, I think that any of us who've been here for a while know that this is a very, one of the most difficult issues for us, the memorials, trying to figure out how to make everyone happy and do it the right way. And I think we've done a great job historically, and with this document, we can do a better job because it's very well done and very well, very badly needed to get this put together. I have two questions, though. One, well, one is a comment. I'm happy to see that you dealt with the park and the idea that these can be not just structures, but can be spaces that can be used. And to get sponsors to look at that throughout the city is very valuable, I think. It's not just necessarily a statue. It can be something that can, can work and be useful to the community and amenity. The other question, the naval memorial, we had to go back a few years ago, I guess it's been now, and put plaques on it, which was a modification. There was a desire to have some engraved things put on the, behind the seats or around it. And I think there was some pushback, some concern about when is it done and when is it not done? And I think we probably can't control that, but it does change, change the, can change the idea of the initial design. Is there any comment or any thought about that here, or is it kind of do it as it comes kind of a situation?
We don't express that issue specifically here, sort of the growing memorial landscapes. On the one hand, I'm sort of sympathetic because I know one of the great desires of sponsors is to make sure that memorials are relevant to future generations. So, I appreciate that. And the idea of, I think, sort of going back and revisiting memorials after they're finished, you know, shouldn't be off the table. But on the other hand, the process of arriving at a design is so deliberative, and so, I think generally, we, we seek to keep the original design intact and not try to add on to it. I don't know if that's...
Ms. Gunning.
Just a quick comment. One of the alarming trends that your very helpful report notes is, what would I call it? Commemoration sprawl? That the size of the memorials keep getting larger and larger at a time when arguably there's less and less space maybe to, to use it. Or maybe it's not sprawl because most of it's concentrated in the core of the city, and there are maybe other further out areas where we'd like things to happen. One of the things that we have a lot to say is process. Maybe we could develop a matrix that looks at size and location and suggests an increasingly onerous and timely process for...
More onerous.
Exactly. For, for things that are very large and in the middle, and less process for things that are smaller and that are on the edges, so that we try to create a set of incentives for people who are looking for commemorative sites.
Actually, we have that model in Ottawa. They basically drew a ring around the core and said, if you want to build something, you know, more modest, here will be the review, and you knew kind of going into it what you were going to get. So...
I don't know that it would help or make a difference, but it seems like we don't have a lot of say over where and how this happens, but that might be one of the ways that we could help people imagine getting it done in their lifetime or not. Thanks.
Other comments? Ms. White.
Along those lines, I really like that idea, and I wanted to commend you for the section here on ideas for future directions, and it builds on the previous presentation about the AIDS quilt, and just getting people to think about commemoration in a totally different way than something permanent. So, I look forward to more research and ideas about that. So, thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Dennis. It's the button beside on the...
I got it. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kempf. This is awesome. I think that this is truly, truly fascinating, and thank you very much and all those who worked on it. The, the map and the description in Figure 6 is so interesting, and I think that is going to be helpful to a lot of people who are going to be looking at this and trying to get an overview of where we are at this point in time. And I'm so struck by the charts and the graphs in Figures 2 and 3 because it raises such a fundamental question, which I think may be the question that you say you are asked most often, which is, why do we do this at all? And because it's not automatic. It was not always the case. You did not have it to the same extent. You did not have it to the same style. And why exactly is that? It seems clear that what you're trying to do, whether it's a person, a group of people, or an event, is to convey to some future something that happened here. And that the assumption has got to be an optimistic one because you have to believe that there will be people here to come and look and to have some form of identity, and not to see these monuments as ruins, but to understand, to have some connection as to what they were so that we will be able to then convey to that future audience. That's really the fundamental question. What is the future audience? That's one of the questions. The other is an ironic one because part of the assumption is that unless we do this, it may be forgotten.
Right.
Or it may be misremembered. So, while we argue about where should it be and all of these other factors that are so important, the space question and the design components and so on, it seems to me that what I draw from this report is that these monuments weren't always here. And at some point in our history, we said, let's have some monuments, some memorials. And then, we, well, 14 for Civil War figures, well, maybe that's too much for one event. Maybe we should have different concepts and so on. And I think it's so useful to get that overview. But of course, we, I believe, and it goes beyond, I think, the scope of the report, is the cost factor. And whether, wherever you are in time, you're going to have to take into account how much money you want to spend, and do you have the available resources, and how much of it do you want to allocate, and so on and so forth. So, I think that's, I think those are elements that may be even beyond what, what we do here, but I think that we have to keep these in the back of our mind as we evaluate what it is we're doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dennis. Mr. May, or Mr. Proventia? Go ahead. Please go.
To piggyback on a couple of those thoughts, I agree. Even if you set aside the old saying about the winners are the ones who write the history and therefore determine what the memorials are, I think this is a wonderful report, very comprehensive. I think it's an absolutely appropriate initiative and absolutely appropriate use of the talent and resources and so forth of the NCPC staff to develop this. In addition, I think it's, it was readily apparent to me, the synergy, the alignment, the cohesion between this and the urban design element. These things seem to fit very, very well together. Thank you.
Mr. May.
Okay, thanks. First of all, I do want to thank Lucy for all of her efforts and anyone else in NCPC who was involved, and I know there were other folks who were working on it. My staff, David Hayes, Glenn DeMar, and Nancy Young. Glenn DeMar, actually, and Nancy are kind of the duo of people who have worked so much on memorial projects over the years, and it, this report, I think, is, includes a lot of the wisdom that they bring to this, having... wisdom that they bring to this, having lived through many, many, many different memorial projects. I only have five years in on it, and they've got, you know, 20-plus both. The, I will say, there are some things that we've talked about that I think are already part of the process. First of all, what we see in terms of how a memorial gets built, what we see here at this commission, is a very, very small segment of the total process. And while it's a nice idea to maybe encourage development in certain areas over others and make the process less complicated, even the small memorials can be very, very complicated depending on where they are and where they go and what the subject matter is and how the neighborhood feels about it and so on. So it is a difficult process, necessarily so. I mean, it shouldn't be easy to place these things, or as easy as it perhaps once was, where a lot of these memorials that we have now were originally placed with a little bit less consideration. It works pretty well. The Commemorative Works Act does provide for the Area 1 designation, so anything that's going to be right down in the prime space in the area surrounding them all does have to get a second act of Congress. So it's tough enough getting one act of Congress. Getting two is even harder. It's interesting to note, at the moment, I think that there are nine different pieces of legislation pending in the current Congress relating to memorials, either new memorial proposals or things that might affect other memorial proposals. And that's fairly typical for a given Congress. So if, I would guess at this point, we might see two pieces of legislation passed as a result, but that's only a guess. We might say nothing. But that's fairly typical. We don't get a lot of new proposals, so the process of getting more of them, I think, we don't have to worry about throttling back on that too much. I think the Congress has good control over how frequently those things are authorized. I am encouraged to hear the issue of cost raised, not just for the cost of constructing memorials. And in that circumstance, the burden is typically on an outside group to build it, raise the money for it, et cetera, and that, you know, they can either do it and it succeeds, or in some cases, they can't do it, and the memorial effort just simply doesn't happen, and that happened with...
Which is why some of us repeatedly ask about the fundraising and the solidity of the sponsors.
Well, and so, but that, I think, I don't think that's a concern for this commission because it either happens or it doesn't. The bigger concern I have is the operation costs of memorials in the future. And we have, you know, the Park Service, as do many federal agencies, have constant concerns about growing resources to take care of and dwindling funds to do that. So it is a concern for us, and I'm glad that we're paying attention to it. I don't know how you can possibly get a handle on that. It's certainly not something that this commission can do explicitly. I think it would take congressional action. But anyway, it is very helpful to have all this information out there. It is, it was enlightening to have this discussion with NCPC about it, just between us, who deal with memorials all the time. We had such different views on certain things, and just airing that out and coming forth with this report, I think, has been a great experience for us and I think it's been an effort to all who are interested in this stuff. Thanks.
Ms. Chairman. I'd like to just pick up on this financial issue. I don't know whether it could be done, but if graphically, some way we could show both time and cost, just average, some kind of an idea to let someone who's looking at this understand that there is a range of costs that may be involved, and there's a timetable that they're going to have to be willing to, from beginning to end. And I think that would be, and also maybe the government has to, a percentage of some costs that, so people see a reality when they start looking at a book like this and seeing these things. I don't know whether it can be done, but it seems to me that that's something worth letting people know upfront and the public see. Maybe it can be done.
I'll consult with maybe the Park Service, and we can see if what kind of information would be useful.
Yeah, I mean, we've, we're in the process of putting together our own compilation of information about memorials, and typical costs of construction and operation are two of the components of what we want to make available to memorial sponsors. But we don't really start talking with memorial sponsors until after it's been authorized. So it's, you know, they may have certain ideas about what a memorial is, but we can't have the critical conversation about how costly that particular vision might be until it's been authorized. But it is part of what we try to do, and on significant memorials, we do request the sponsor to produce a report, a total cost of facility ownership. That becomes, I mean, it's very interesting and it's helpful for us, for our planning, but it doesn't guarantee that we'll be funded sufficiently to cover that cost.
Thank you, Ms. Kempf, very much.
Thank you very much.
There being no other business to come before the commission, we are adjourned.